Hello, I'd like to welcome everybody to our special meeting located at the Municipal and Safety Building at 601 East Main Street in Johnson City, Tennessee. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Really just have a few opening comments, just how we're going to kind of start the process and handle it for the candidates to listen and just kind of know how we're going to move forward. But I'd like to start by saying thanks to everyone that submitted their letters of interest in the vacancy. We had an impressive pool of applicants, and I feel very positive about the level of civic engagement from our community in this. To recap the process, those letters and resumes were accepted through noon last Friday, October 9th. Applicants were asked to include professional and community service and to consider the city's strategic plan. Letters of support for candidates were also accepted. Each commissioner selected two candidates to be interviewed today. With some overlap in those selections, we have five candidates who will each have 45 minutes for their interview. They each have selected a number at random to determine the order of the interviews. Because this process will take approximately five hours, we will take a 20-minute recess after the second candidate. Candidates, when it's your turn, we ask that you take a couple of minutes to first introduce yourself to the commission and state why you're interested in this position. And commissioners, we will have approximately 35 minutes afterwards to ask candidates questions, followed by around eight minutes for the candidate to ask us questions that they have. We do ask that the audience be respectful of the candidates this evening. There will be no public comment or questions this evening. While not a typical interview process, these are still interviews for these people, so we ask that everyone be mindful and that they be respectful and courteous to the candidates. Do any of the candidates or commissioners have questions about the process before we get started? Let's start with commissioners.
Should we make clear that applause would not be appropriate?
I think it would be good for everyone in the audience just to be quiet and mindful completely. It is a unique situation for interviews. We're doing this to be open and for the community to be able to hear what we have to, what we're hearing that'll help us make our decision on Thursday. On Thursday, there will be, this will be on the agenda, and there will be time for public comment if you sign up in advance. So if you have something to say, that would be the appropriate time, would be on Thursday at public comment. And I'll hold to that pretty well, so I really would like everyone to be very mindful and hold any applause or negativity. That's a good comment, Joe. I can go ahead and read off just the order that we're going to go by. I think Tricia is first, Bo Westmoreland, Dr. Westmoreland, second, Whitney Getz is third, Timber Aldrich, and Seth Thomas, she'll finish up. Depending on how it goes, after the third and fourth interview, we may take a small recess if we feel like we need to. But I say at this time, just go ahead and get started, and I'd like to call Tricia Carradine. How are you?
I'm good.
Hey, I know this is just, we're just having a conversation, and I would just go over just a little bit as we'll take the first few minutes to listen to what you have to say about yourself and your background, your experience, why you want to do this. Then we'll have some time to ask questions. I think I'll probably just go down the row and ask for commissioners, for each commissioner to ask questions that they have, and there may be a follow-up to those. And then when we kind of wind up, we'll let you ask some questions at the end.
Thank you.
It is a 45-minute timer. I got this one turned off just so it's not quite as apparent in your face, but we'll watch it, but don't pay a whole lot of attention to it. All right, well, we'd love to hear about yourself.
First, thank you, not just for the invitation to be here, but also for the process. My name is Tricia Coraid. I am perhaps the newest member to Johnson City out of all of the applicants. I see that as a positive. The community is changing significantly, very quickly, and not only do I, as an individual, have a unique perspective, but my body of experience, not having grown up here, offers a different perspective, too. I came to Johnson City purposely through an exhaustive interview process, so yes, I interviewed you before you have the chance to interview me. And Chris and I chose Johnson City after looking at data, after visiting, feeling the community, and knowing that this is a place that we wanted to call home. I didn't wait long before arriving, before engaging purposely and extensively in learning about the city, in learning about the people, and seeing how I can offer my best self to the community. I feel my best asset is that I have the time, the dedication, the desire, and the passion to show up in the community, for the community. Why now? About a year ago, I thought, wow, I can do this. Three to five years from now, I started looking at election cycles, and then the circumstances presented themselves last week, and here I am. Now's the time. I feel called to do this now.
Thank you for that. Joe, I'll just start with you, and if you don't mind asking questions, and if you want to follow up with whichever one, and we'll run down the line.
I guess I'll start with a question related to the commission's role. And I would ask, what do you see as the most important way a city commissioner can influence the direction of the city?
Thank you. So it's important to make sure that we understand and that the public understands there's a difference between being in a leadership role on the commission and public administration. The staff and the paid employees are responsible to organize and orchestrate. The commission is here to provide strategic guidance, to be looking very far down the road, and to offer connection points, not only in the city, but outside of the city also. We do not live in a microcosm without external influence. So utilizing relationships, building connections, is probably the most influential way that a commissioner can be effective.
Tricia, thank you. Thank you, number one. You've shown up at probably more meetings than anybody that I know, and thank you for your interest in doing that for a couple of years now. One of the primary responsibilities of the commission is to deliver a budget to the citizens of Johnson City. What criteria would you use to evaluate the city's budget's priorities?
So finances is, it's in my blood. I spent 35 years in business focused on finance and leveraging the skills that are important in finance to be effective else in other places. It's important to understand the tactical goals that a city has in order to make decisions on where to allocate their resources. The goals can be strategic in nature, which takes a very different view of financial stewardship than does the discrete issue of a school is being built today. How do we make sure that funding is in place? And if we need to make trade-offs, being very conscious about how those decisions are made. There was no small decision that I was ever part of in looking at a financial budget, and it's because, in my role, money meant people. It meant jobs, and I never lost, I never lost sight of the fact that the financial decisions aren't about money. It's about the people, and in my corporate career, about the business and the technology. In the view of a city, it's about our citizens, our residents, our visitors, and the services that are provided to them and for them, and then helping to make sure sustainable growth can be in place by way of financial stewardship.
I do have a follow-up to that, since we're talking about budget and financial. If all of you candidates were actually running in a regular campaign, and you're out at forum after forum after forum, you will be asked this question at almost every forum that I'm getting ready to ask you. Running a city requires revenue, and meeting the priorities requires revenue, and that source of revenue is sales tax and property tax. What we make decisions on is the rate of the property tax. So under what conditions would have to happen for you to approve a property tax increase?
Great question, and I'm sure a common difficult question as you asked. Property tax makes up about 37% of the revenue in the general fund, setting aside the enterprise funds of water and sewer that are self-sustaining, right? So the property tax doesn't fund everything in the city, but it certainly funds very important things. Property tax revenue is based on two things, the rate and the value of the property, right? The value of the property is something that's decided objectively by way of data, market dynamics, actual sales. So as we start at the number that's handed to us by the state of Tennessee, the decision becomes the increment. Where are we willing to raise or lower, because this isn't always just a one-way street, it can work both ways. We need to understand the long-term view. What goals are in place? What priorities are in place? Having done the work to dig into what those projects look like, understand different funding mechanisms, and truly come back to property taxes as a last option. I've sat on the Board of Equalization. I understand intimately every increase in either value or rate affects an individual, individuals who have sat in front of me and cried because they can't pay their current property tax bill, right? This is about looking elsewhere before we go there.
Thank you.
Todd?
Appreciate you being here. Thank you for your interest, not just tonight, but this afternoon, but along the last couple of years while you've been here for a lot of things, so. I know you've got a lot of thoughts in there about what's going on and what we're doing and things, but I guess if you could say what your top three priorities are for the city of Johnson City going along this next year, what would you pick as your top three things that we need to be working on?
Without a doubt, top priority would be to build connections. There are groups and communities that are disconnected from the commission, they are disconnected from the city. Their perspective is wholly valid, and it comes from their place. We owe it to citizens, to residents, to visitors, to build bridges where the bridges have collapsed. I am confident that I can not only help to rebuild bridges, but to figure out how to build different bridges, how to connect in different ways, how to connect with people who aren't actively disconnected but not involved in the community. Priority one is to rebuild that trust. Priority two is to dig into the process and the information that no one other than you and city administration, probably not even everybody in city administration, has eyes into. Learning why, why the decisions have been made up till now, bringing in a different viewpoint, perhaps even looking to bring in a different view of formal, how do you build public policy? I was thrilled in 2025 to see that the budget book had a management, a performance management report in it for the first time. That's one part of formal, you know, policy and administration. Understanding how do we gather the data, how do we build the evidence that supports the decisions being made, and add some transparency to that for the general public in a way that's easily accessible to the general public, because not everybody does have, come May, a master's in public administration. We need to meet people where they are, right? And then third, take a look at how we can make sure that we're not growing our city at the expense of what makes our city special. And what I mean is this, yes, industry, yes, business growth, yes, housing growth. One of the things that brought me to Johnson City, and as I speak with other citizens and residents that drive them and their passion for the city, is our beautiful greenlands. How do we make sure that we are purposefully asking the right questions about our growth so that we're not giving up what makes our city so special?
Thank you. Joe, roll back over to you.
Johnson City, oops. There we go. Johnson City operates under a council-manager form of government. And how do you see the balance of authority between the city commission and that of the city manager?
So there is the, there's the formality of the difference in roles, and then there is the balance of the two. It is very clear the role of administration versus the role of leadership, which is what the commission, you know, very simplistically, that's the role, is leadership. The conversations that take place need to be respectful, to not overstep. It is not in your scope to direct Manager Ball and her staff on how to run this city, providing guidance, leadership, and as relationships develop, asking the right questions that help Manager Ball question whether she is doing the right things for the right reasons, right? It's not about directing, it's about questioning to understand, and by questioning to understand more ourselves, that's how we help other people understand more about why they make the decisions that they make. And in the other direction, it is the city staff's responsibility to advise the commission. There is no way for any of the five commissioners to have enough time to understand everything about every situation that's being presented. That's why they're there. That's why they are the experts in their space, and the commission needs to trust their skills, their expertise, take the advice, and then bring it into the bigger picture to make the best decision possible in the moment with the information we have.
My question is a little bit what Dr. Fowler asked just a minute ago, but you've been here long enough, and we're going to talk a little bit about vision. So where do you see Johnson City being in the next five years, but what are the barriers to getting there? And what are the barriers, not but?
And, and what are the barriers?
Yes.
In five years, I see that we have started work on the Boones Creek Tourism District, right? The barrier to that, aside from the tactics of the state weighing in on that, the barrier to that is doing it in a way that we have the public support. I'm confident that the district has been purposefully chosen and isolated in a space that it can be considered infilling, right? Starting to use some of that space that's close in so that we can leave the natural areas natural. So public support is going to always be a barrier to what we want to get done. It's not an insurmountable barrier. Having conversations, connecting with people, making it tangible on why this is a good thing for the city, and if it's good for the city, how does that make it good for them as individuals, relating it back to the person? Five years from now, we will have grown. The trend is that we are growing. There is nothing that's going on here that's going to change that. If anything, it's going to accelerate, right? The national support, you know, headlines for Johnson City, and, you know, despite other headlines, how wonderful this place is to be in. It will grow. Five years from now, my hope, my plan, if I have the choice, is that we have the housing to support the growth in the job market, in the industry that we need in order to benefit both from the economy, from the residents being able to own houses where they live, and enjoying the natural land all along the way.
Thank you.
You've got an extensive resume and held a lot of positions, lived a lot of places. Have you been involved in city government in some of those other communities? You know, I'm sure your workload at the time was extensive, so just curious, if you were then, and if not, were you as involved in understanding what was going on in the communities as you are here? Because I do feel like you're, you and your husband do seem to really pay attention and know where to find the information, and which I appreciate very much.
Thank you. Fake husband, real boyfriend.
I'm sorry.
Formally, I have never run for an office. I have never raised my hand before to ask to be appointed to a public office. However, I continue to show up and I continue to vote, and as a citizen, that is the most important part of civics that anybody can do. I have always been involved in my community, and I mean always. I was a Girl Scout from age six, and service is part, deeply part, of the scouting experience. My experience followed the natural path of parenthood, you know? So as Sawyer was young, it was very focused around her activities, team mom, clerk of course, you know? Naturally, that started to then see a horizon, and I chose to stay engaged in many of those things, right? And then I chose to become more involved. When I worked for Citigroup in Jacksonville, they selected me. We had a campus of about 5,000 people. I was one of two people who were invited to participate in a program called Blueprint for Leadership. It was a program run by the city to help emerging leaders learn how to be effective sitting on boards, serving nonprofits. I served as an intern on the Board of Directors for the Girl Scouts of Gateway Council for a year as part of that experience. So this is the first time I'm stepping forward. I am super uncomfortable being the center of attention, and I do it anyway, and I've shown up because I realize after this six days are over, it's no longer about me, it's about the city again, it's about the community. So I sit here uncomfortable, knowing that it's not really about me.
And I've got one more, not necessarily in relation to that, but it's one that just stands out to me, and you've got a Six Sigma certification, and trying to just run through your resume, it doesn't seem like, it doesn't, it seems like that's something you may have wanted to get. Just tell me about that and that process, why you felt like it was important, and if you still use that in quality and excellence and...
So I'll say I don't use Six Sigma formally, but I use process improvement in my life, everything from organizing my sock drawer to how the pantry is. I'm being honest, like continuous improvement, how to make things more effective and efficient without losing the warmth. I was asked to take that certification because I was asked to assume responsibility for a team of six people who were responsible for reengineering in the broader technology organization. So part of it was, you're being asked to lead these people, it's important that you understand what tools they have in their tool belt, and the way that I was asked to do that was to take the certification.
Thanks.
I don't know the other questions that are coming, but I know this one's a hard one for me, and I imagine it will be a little bit hard for you, too. But what role do you think the city should play in addressing homelessness? I mean, there are so many different ways of going about it. I've been to classes about it, I've been to national things about it, and there's not a proven way. What do you think we should do?
I, and that's actually not a hard question at all for me. I think the city can be more effective in supporting the small nonprofit sector. Nonprofit organizations are filling a gap between government services and private business. Nonprofit organizations are a tax status, not a business model. Nonprofit organizations bring economy, they offer jobs, and fill that gap of services. I was thrilled to see that the city chose to focus on a strategic plan for homeless and to bring someone on from the outside, outside the city staff, to lead that effort. Now that we have some data and a baseline, let's take it to the next step. Let's figure out how we can help to facilitate the services being placed, being put in place to help the people who live on the streets live somewhere else if that's not where they want to live, to help support people in the way they want to be supported. And yes, it's hard decisions to make. I lived downtown, downtown downtown, corner of Main and Spring Street the first year. So I woke up in the morning seeing what happens overnight. I woke up stepping over people who were sleeping outside the front door of my house. I think the city is looking at it purposefully. There is a beginning set of information in place. We need to figure out what do we do with that information and start making decisions.
Thank you.
I'd like to follow along on that. So you mentioned playing a role with respect to the smaller nonprofits. How would you go about addressing areas where perhaps not all the nonprofits are rowing the boat in the same direction or don't share the same vision of what we're aiming at?
Sometimes when people choose not to see the common goal, we have failures of leadership. People are humans first and foremost. We bring with us the culmination of our experiences. And yes, there are going to be, there are, there were, there will be situations where leaders perhaps choose to hoard resources instead of looking at the common goal, looking at themselves in a mirror and asking who they're truly there to serve. Because if the common goal isn't the center point of nonprofit individually or as a collective, then we do sadly have the wrong leadership. There's a gentleness to conversations that need to happen if we find ourselves in that situation, and the gentleness is about respecting the individuals and all that they've done. They might not have started off focused in the wrong way, but perhaps they're there now. So the honest, open, respectful conversations will either help to bring the nonprofits towards the common goal or not. And if they don't, I trust that everything has a season, everything has a reason. If a nonprofit is not serving in the community, eventually whoever is financially supporting that nonprofit will realize it, and funding will dry up, that nonprofit will fold, and hopefully somebody else chooses to step forward and fill the gap. Did that answer your question? Did that answer your question?
I'd like to switch gears just a little bit. You know, we have a lot of people who are leaving elected leadership right now, and you five want to get into it. And there's a change in the atmosphere today, and so we're calling it a lack of civility. You've been to many of our meetings, and they've been very contentious, you know, how we react on our side, how the public reacts. Just, I'm interested in your comments on it because you've observed it a lot. And then how we as a community promote civility better because we can hear better, we can hear the people's input when we do have that ability to have a dialogue. So what are your thoughts on it?
First, we can only control how we show up. We cannot control how anybody else shows up. That doesn't mean we can't be part of the process to help people slow it down, cool it down, and come to a healthier place in interaction. There's a difference between listening and listening. For me, I choose to show up and listen to the people who truly have a very different perspective than me. Someone who is adamantly holding an opinion and a perspective 180 degrees opposite of mine. Listening actively without thinking what I'm going to say, how am I going to rebut it, is one of the ways that I help to make sure that my belief system is framed around information and not just conspiracy or propaganda. That takes a skill. And like any other skill, we need to learn how to use the skill. We need to learn the skill, we need to learn how to use it. There's value in finding the people who speak the loudest against us and reaching out a hand and saying, let's have a conversation, let's sit down, let's talk, let's start to understand, let's learn how to listen to each other. I don't believe that anybody who has ever shown up in this room and spoken out on whatever perspective of civil to very passionate, I don't think anybody means any harm to this city. I think everybody has the same intent, that the city is the best city it can be for everybody. The passion shows up differently for different people. Let's start to make individual connections with the people who sit in opposition of the things that the commission sees as the vision and the right way forward. I think we'll find common ground.
Mr. Fowler?
No, they're not easy question.
Green button.
It's on, I just wasn't close enough to hear. So thank you. What do you see as the biggest challenge for Johnson City right now?
From a data and a, you know, quote unquote, operations housing. We don't have enough housing at the price points we need housing. From a community involvement standpoint, there's two things. There is the disengagement and there is the mistrust. Two very different things. One's hard, we can tangibly see and track numbers. The other one is soft skill. Johnson City's population at the younger age brackets, 30 and below, is growing at twice the rate of our 65 and over population. The challenge it presents us in that engagement space is that the 65 and older population show up to vote, about 68% voter turnout. The 30 and under show up at half that. So as our older populations begin to naturally decline in numbers, we are inheriting this growing population who data shows, research shows, don't show up to vote because they're not interested and they're too busy. How do we help the general population understand that this is important and there are ways to connect and respect that we have families, we have jobs, we have lawns to mow, we have parents, aging parents to care for. It is important, how do we help it be important for people that have lives and a multitude of other priorities?
And as a follow-up, you mentioned that we have a younger population. Nine years ago, when I got on the commission, we had an older population. We were having trouble keeping young people in Johnson City, and that was one of the reasons my kids were moving away. I wanted to make Johnson City better, attractive for younger people. Now that we've done that, we're having the other problem now that you just spoke about. So how do you think we can get the younger people engaged to come and vote and do the things that we would like them to do?
I think we need to look and parse the different ages of population, right? We have an opportunity to start with those that are on the cusp of being able to vote. Perhaps we look at whether we can offer volunteer hours for our high schoolers to show up at these meetings. Something's going to trigger an interest. And if it's not city commission meetings, a planning commission, some sort of active engagement, they listen, whether they look engaged or not, they listen. Something is bound to stimulate them and interest them, and that curiosity is what leads to engagement. The next set of population, you know, they're already voting age, but they're not quite family age, how do we really make it easier? I believe that showing up to vote is easy already, but that's because I know the process I choose. If they don't think it's easy, then we need to understand why don't they think it's easy? And how do we close the gap between what is done now, what is the perception, and bring it all together? And then as you get into the families, let's think outside the box. Are there, you know, bonded, trusted groups of childcare who can hold kids in a safe space while parents stand in some very long lines to vote, right? Let's think outside the box.
We're a very unique city, along with Kingsport, Bristol, Greenville, I believe, in that we have city school systems. So it's a part of our budget, and we provide additional dollars to our public schools to the tune of close to 14 million, somewhere in that range, which really, really gives our schools the opportunity to kind of go the extra mile, the go-all-out, I guess you might say. One of the programs, I think, I was just, it popped in my mind when you were saying, do something that's enticing, kind of extraordinary, and we do the Gov All Out program. I don't know if you've sat in on any of those at all, but it does really click a switch in a lot of these young people, so more of that kind of thing for sure. But with the fact that we have our own school system, it is we have our own additional responsibility for assisting with funding. We just all voted unanimously to bond the money to build a new town acre school. So we're responsible, excuse me, to build the schools in Johnson City. So that's close to 50 million, 45 to 50 million dollar project as it comes along. So with that kind of additional responsibility for the city, that adds an additional layer to our tax base as well, because those are very big ticket items. I'm going to get to a question here in just a second, but so that, how do we then, how do you envision then to lay out the responsibilities of a city that may require additional funding? And many people move here because of our school system. So you can't have that good school system and not have the ability to fund that school system. So what's our message out there to our tax base?
My first message is, I don't understand why more cities don't do it this way. There is a strength to being able to integrate the building of infrastructure, the providing of services. I was surprised to learn that the city provides the buses for, it makes sense, right? Respectfully, I would say the question a little differently. Regardless of where the money flows, it is the citizens and the taxpayers who will pay for the building of schools. Whether that money goes through a city directly to the schools or whether it goes directly to a school system, it is the people who pay for it. I see a great benefit in having that flow through the city and the fact that, yes, you know, there's responsibility there, allows us to look at it at a bigger picture, to connect more of the dots seamlessly. There are, there are cities where the school districts that are separate are at odds with the government. We have a beautiful opportunity, because it's connected, to make sure that those relationships are strong and to offer the best stewardship we can for the money. Did that answer the question?
Well, we're winding up on time, so we want to save some for you to ask us questions just before I do that. Is there any last questions the three of you would like to ask? All right, so if you want to ask us some questions, that'd be great.
I do. And Mayor Cox, the first one's coming to you.
Thanks.
Your tenure has been short, and I'm not discreetly talking about your tenure as mayor, which has been really short. When you think back to before you were even sworn in, everybody walks into situations thinking about, gosh, you know, this is how I'll approach it. So two parts, it's a start-stop. What is something that you have learned in your short period that you think you can start doing to be more effective in how you approach, not the voting, but how you approach being a commissioner? And then on the other hand, something that you intended to have as part of your process that you're like, probably not working, maybe I can figure out where to leverage somebody else's model?
Those are great questions, and it has been short. And I think I've come from an engineer's perspective and thinking, these are the things I want to work on and kind of what you imagine city government might be. And then when you get involved, you might be acquainted with people, but then you realize that we all have, and I think this is the biggest thing where, to your first part of the question, is we all look at every issue with a different set of glasses, whether we know it or not. And I like to think that I would try to be open-minded. And then when you get in this role, you realize there are way more perspectives than I even thought were out there. And so I'm like, okay, I really need to do a good job at something you brought up of active listening and really realizing that just because you think you can relate to somebody's and how they're living, really trying to understand you guys see through their glasses. So that has been something kind of personally to figure out, is these different issues have popped up that I didn't expect. And, you know, there's still a lot of, there's so much good, sometimes these couple issues are more dramatic and so they get talked about more than I, that's something I didn't really expect. I thought you'd kind of more get in and get some boxes to check. And it's more of, okay, navigating what comes up for that day. And I, I still am very grateful to serve and be here. Like you said before, you don't like to necessarily be the center of attention or the limelight, so I for sure do not like that. That's something I even probably actively campaigned, is that I want to be evolved and I want to have, you know, the glasses that I look through and that I, the decisions, and I enjoy decision-making skills, and I think making difficult decisions, and even if they, I think, understanding, making the right decision is usually difficult. And that's another one that I'm still learning.
Thank you. Commissioner Brock, coming to you. I believe you're longest-tenured on the commission?
Yes, I am the GOAT.
Okay. And lovingly so. If you think back to when you first sat on the commission and you look at how the commission has operated, how they have operated, and what has been accomplished, how would you grade the commission, not the people, the leadership organization of the commission? How would you grade on the how and the what?
Thank you for that question, because it really goes to why I decided to run for the commission after six and a half years on the school board. And there was that at that particular time until we got a couple of people over who have been on the school board, who now served on the commission, so that really paved the way. I think the difference when I first started is that the commission was very transactional. You bring this, you vote for it, and it goes on. About 2019, and several, Joe was on the commission at the time, Todd, I don't know if you were, were you on 2019? Okay. But we started the strategic planning process. So we moved to the big picture of, which is a part of our role, and went through a process that took a good half year or more. There's some people in this room who helped us with that. And when we got to the end of it, it was very exciting because it really gave us a framework to, a roadmap, if you will, that the elements didn't change, but the activities under, the objectives under, the elements changed as times changed. And so we're in 2025 now, it's still a very dynamic and good document that we use extensively, and that's the beginning of starting the budgeting process as well. So that to me is the difference of, you know, really getting engaged and involved in understanding your community with a blanket of those elements over it. Thanks for the question.
Thank you. Last question. Eleven years ago, the city charter was changed to allow for this exact process, this appointment process. Unfortunately, twice in the last seven years, this process is being used. So my question is this, open to anybody, my question is this. The last time the appointment process was utilized, what did you learn from, well, I guess it's not fair to ask you, what did you learn from that process that helped to inform or change how this process is being handled? And then second part, what have you already learned from this process going through it this time that hopefully not, but if we ever need to go through it again, we can continuously improve?
So I've reflected on this a lot over the last couple of weeks, because it's become kind of relevant. And, you know, we've talked about the last two times this time, and then when Ralph Van Brockland died, but really there was a third vacancy created when Phil Rowe was elected to Congress, and that was in 2008. And the difference was that his election to Congress and resignation from the commission more closely aligned with the normal cycle of when we would have elections. And so they had a special election. If we were doing, if we were working the old model, the pre-charter amendment, we would be in the middle of just now telling people to come pull petitions and figuring out a date of an election where the city taxpayers would be the sole funding source to opening up polls, and Sullivan, Carter, Washington County cost a couple hundred thousand dollars, and we wouldn't have an end result until probably February, January, February would be my guess. So, you know, I think this has proven to be, particularly with the idea that you'd be having that election in January or February for somebody who would literally be picking up petitions in 60 days or something to be running again. I think what we've I think what, what we've probably learned is, you know, how to communicate perhaps better with people to participate. I value the public input. I value the comments, I value the emails, I value the letters, but to really kind of speak to the ways in which people can offer the greatest degree of insight. You know, we're not voting on a commissioner. We are, we are deciding on an appointment, and that's a very different decision-making process, and I realize I'm, I'm over time for you. But the, the gist of it is, running in an election is a pretty significant undertaking. It takes months, it takes money, you knock on lots of doors, you go to lots of forums, you get asked lots of questions, you talk to lots of people. It is a very steep hill. This, two weeks ago, we didn't even know this vacancy was here. And one of the five of you likely is going to be a city commissioner in 49 hours or something, whatever, whatever the time is. And so this is a relatively low threshold, but I think because it's an appointment rather than an election, it ends up being a higher bar. You ask a question of what, would I do different? You know, after we've gotten into this, I'd kind of like to do a postmortem. I mean, I think, you know, as far as having some sort of rubric that was a measure, there are ways in which now I would look at and say, oh, yeah, I wish we had a way. But in the spirit of transparency, we don't get to talk about this, except for in these meetings. So the last time we talked about this appointment was two weeks ago, or 12 days ago. And so there are ways now in hindsight, it's like, I wish we had come up with some kind of scoring matrix, or some sort of way to keep track of interviews. Perhaps a future commission that I hopefully will not be a part of, that has to do that, we'll have time to think about that.
Appreciate it. Now, this is a ton of work for, for all you guys and gals, but yeah, my name is Beau Westmoreland. I'm a general dentist here, been here 30 years. Grew up, my parents, let me give you a boring backdrop, I guess. My mother is from Kingsport, my father's from Carter County. They met at ETSU, she was homecoming queen, he was homecoming king. Both very good-looking people, it skips a generation, apparently. So they had my brother and I, they ended up splitting up, and we were very young, so my mother raised my brother and I, and my grandmother, my mother and grandmother raised us, and it was tough. We lived in one of the very low-income areas of Kingsport, and, but my mom tried really hard, she worked multiple jobs. And I started working at 10. I created my own landscape business. And I started by mowing my grandmother's yard, because she would make me biscuits for a trade-off. And I realized I liked that trade-off. And then the neighbor said, will you mow, and I'll pay you $5. And another neighbor, and another neighbor, and I think I ended up having five or six yards. And I understood at that point, at a young age, I think I was fourth or fifth grade, just some entrepreneurial ship, and, and understanding the value of a dollar. Because suddenly, when I had some money, I didn't necessarily want to spend it, because I knew how hard I had to work to get that money. Because it's hot, you know, mowing yards as a 10-year-old with a push mower. And this was before the days of the automatic and all that, so it was hard work. So it, I, at that young age, I developed a, I had a checking account, a savings account, started my own, and just always thought along those terms. And as I got a little bit older, I realized I was thoroughly enjoyed working, enjoyed making a living, and enjoyed watching money grow in my checking account. And then right around that time, the Reagan revolution hit, and I was fascinated by everything going on in the country at that time. For those of us old enough to remember, it was from 1980 to 1988 was pretty incredible. Spurned an interest, but I knew I didn't want to do that for a living. I was always luckily very good in science, and very good with my hands, so debated med school, dental school. Ended up going to ETSU, graduated with a biological science degree, went to UT Health Science Center for dental school. Had multiple places I could have gone in the entire southeast, being licensed in multiple states, but the main ones were Nashville and Knoxville with large opportunities, which as a young person, it was, I turned it down, because I wanted to come back to the tri-cities. And that's the point of my rambling story, I wanted to come back home. I loved this place, and I wanted, my wife and I had a child, and I wanted my son to know his grandparents, because I didn't have any grandparents, but one. Family is extremely important to me. It is my number-one driver, and it's my purpose. And I just decided Johnson City was the place. Even though I grew up mostly in Kingsport, Johnson City just is a, for a lack of a better word, it sounds kind of hokey maybe, but it's kind of magical to me. It just has the college, and it, you know, growing up in Kingsport, and no offense to Kingsport, but it's Dobbins Bennett and Eastman. And I played baseball there, and they brainwash you that Dobbins Bennett is the number-one of everything. But Johnson City is so diverse, and so vibrant, and just, I don't know, it's just a great place. That's where I decided I wanted to build my practice, and I basically started it from scratch, and built my family, and built my practice, and I've been here ever since, and I have loved it, I have absolutely loved it. I've enjoyed doing many extracurricular things. I started some youth baseball leagues that grew very large. I've been very active in my churches. Todd and I actually went to church for years, for 13 years together, I believe. So that's kind of my, my story. My main reason for being here is I, is I'm at the point in my career, I have time now, my sons are grown, I have a grandson, another grandson on the way, I have time to dedicate to the city. I want, I've seen a few problems, I've been a victim of a few problems, I've been, I don't like to use the word attacked, that is too strong, so I'd say accosted, but three separate times downtown over the last few years. And finally, the last one pushed me over the edge, and I thought I would join in, and I ran for election. And I've always wanted to run for election, I've always wanted to have a microphone and be able to talk, and as I'm doing right now. But it was, it was, I got to meet all of you, it was great, and we, and, you know, we ran together, and it was a great experience, I thoroughly enjoyed it, met some wonderful people. And, but I want to serve this city, I want to see the city continue to go forward, and as I call it, turn down the temperature, it's so hot right now, and I don't think it has to be. And I feel just as a down-to-earth guy, that I can about talk to anybody at any time, on any conversation, on any topic, from baseball playoffs to, to medical dental, to, to, you name it, I can talk about it. And so that's, that's kind of my life story in a real fast nutshell, and I just want to serve this city. And, and by the way, I think all of y'all have done a, a, a good job. I mean, it's, I know you're new, but I never had any major complaints, I just wanted to contribute to it. I wanted to be a leader of this town, I've always led, I was a class officer for four years in dental school, I was president of the dental fraternity for two years, treasurer in, in high school, you know, did all kinds of activities. So anyway, this seems to be the next logical step for me. I would love to represent the citizens of this town, and, and be transparent, and just be their voice.
Well, thank you for that, and we'll get into some questions, and kind of the same thing, we'll kind of work down the line, ask a few questions, follow up if you need to. Commissioner Wise?
Yeah. Since you used the word transparent, what does transparency in city government mean to you in practical terms?
So the, the single biggest thing I hear when I'm talking with, with patient base, or just chit-chatting about things, is people don't, they don't seem to know where their tax money is going. Now granted, I think some of that can be accessed, but I think being very open and just talking about where we are with things. There's a feeling, incorrect or correct, I'm not sure, but there's a feeling that things are being done, you know, below board, or whatever the phrase is. I don't particularly believe that, but I just believe in saying, I will, for me, transparency, if I am up here, there will never be a doubt where I stand on any topic. And that's good or bad, but you know where you stand with me, you know exactly, you don't have to wonder, I wonder what Beau's thinking, you know, because I'll say it. And there's a wide range of topics in this town, but more, it's just more for me, just to, to explain my position, I suppose.
I'll follow up with that one as well. So soon to be, the five of us are not just the people who have a responsibility to deliver a budget to the people. We are fiduciary agents of an over $330, $40 million budget.
Right.
Lot of line items in that, in that budget. So my question, and you put it in your, your letter to us, is that, that's one of the things that you want to try to do, that the tax, tax dollar is spent properly. How would you approach that when you think about how the budget is assembled, and then, and then reviewed multiple, multiple times? How do, is there another step in there that you think would be beneficial, so that there's this test, proper expenditures, I guess?
So are you asking me, like, if there's an error or something? I'm not exactly...
No, it's, well, let me just read your quote right here, it is, that our tax dollars are allocated properly.
Yeah. And I don't, yeah, I don't mean that as anything, that anything is being done improperly here, I just think people want that, that's the number-one thing that I hear. Well, if you get in there, that's how it starts, you need to spend this, like, but, I don't know, I'm very thorough with review of things. I mean, you know, my office has grown from basically scratch to multimillion, I have to follow everything on there, and I have no issue doing the same thing here, looking for everything. And in the interest of me being transparent, have I taken the entire budget and looked at every single thing? No, I just, I haven't. But there may be some pork in there that could be looked at, I, I don't know, but I would just, I think from my end would be, I would do, I would promise the citizens that I would do the very best that I could to make sure that it was spent correctly.
Thank you.
I may follow up with Jenny's last question of under, just with that being said, is just, under what situation would you ever understand and approve a tax increase? And I'm just kind of piggybacking from that one on the previous...
A tax increase on property sales?
It really can be, it's property that we really would manage.
Yeah, that's the, that is extremely difficult question, and I don't know that anybody knows the answer to that question. Everyone complains about that every year when they get their tax bill. I would have to look at every single line item and see if there's urgencies anywhere, you know, say the, say the fire department, say there's an urgency somewhere. At that point, we would have to have very detailed and open conversations on why we are having to do this, because people want to know. Obviously, I would not want to ever raise taxes on anybody or recommend such. I think in an emergency situation, we maybe would have to, but obviously, I would hope not. But I do not have a full definitive, perfect answer for that, and I don't know that anyone does. That's, that's a hard topic.
So I've got a hard question for you. So I'm a physician. I ended up, I was on the commission for a couple of years when I worked at one clinic here in town, and they collected a different way and paid me a different way than other places do. So when you're absent, you don't get money, you get it only when you're working. So one of the things that I ended up having to do was change my place of employment to be more on a salary, because I told them, there are times, I'm going to be mayor, I'm going to take all this time away from the office. The balance part, as a dentist, as a city commissioner, how are you planning on balancing that? Because my balance is still not good. I spend way too much time doing other things. But I waited until my kids were out of school, I waited until some other things were going on. But it's hard to do all of the things, be it all of the meetings, read 800 pages over the weekend for the meeting on Thursday, and do all those things. How are you, have you thought about?
Oh, I've thought a lot about it.
How we're going to balance? So I'd like to hear your thoughts now.
So luckily, at almost 58, I've planned very well. You know, I try to be very organized, and a long time ago, I sat down, I was probably 28 to 30, and I sat down with a, with, with my practice management group and a retirement plan specialist, and insurance people. Had a meeting, and I said, and I remember exactly, I said, tell me, if you had the perfect client situation, tell me what it would be. Like, like I'm taught dentistry, you were taught medicine, tell me the perfect scenario, and get back to me. And they gave me the scenarios, and I implemented that. Now, that being said, it gave me financial security right now, where, and I'm also very non-money driven, it's not my driver, I think there's lots of things in life to pursue other than that, we have to have it to live, and, excuse me, and all that. But I grew up with very little, and I, I don't need a lot of material things to be happy. You'll find this interesting, maybe, but I have severe arthritis in my left thumb that is surgical. So I have already been slowing down before all this happened. And I actually bought and added onto my office, and I work, and what I call semi-retirement room. So I've got one main operatory, and I do my TMJ and cranial facial pain over here, because it's low impact. I have already been working on taking Thursdays off, I was going to go down to three days a week anyway. This is before any of this, this has been in the works now for, even before I ran for, you know, for a commission last year. That part is established. I have a partner now, he's in there, he is, he is actual, you know, 50% partner, he bought in last year, and he works full-time, and that part is under control, I don't have any issue with that. I have the time. Again, my kids are grown, they're married, I, I have the time to sit down, and I'm lucky that I can retain large volumes of material very fast. You know, you know how we had to do that in, in Utah, but I, can I remember every bit of it? No, but can I sit down and read a lot fast? Yes. Did it in school, you know? That part, and I was actually, when I got to my turn to ask, I was going to ask you what the work schedule was, that was one of my questions. But yes, that part is under control, because I was already phasing before this, I was slowing down to three days a week anyway, and maybe even a little less, but does that answer? But far as balancing, it's perfect, it fits my life perfect. I can donate time, I can go to ribbon cuttings, I can go be, I don't work Fridays, I haven't in years. I can go be a face, if the, if the mayor is preoccupied, I could go down and do something. I have flexibility, and I own the whole corporation. I, I know that sounds, I don't mean it to sound cocky or conceited, it's just, I own it, I can do what I want. And if, and my patients have been with me a long time, and like even today, this got happened, this happened really quick, and I had to move a few people, I said, I'm really sorry, but I, I've got to go to this interview. And they were like, hey, that's totally fine, because I don't do that, I'm always there, I never, I never leave the office. But I've reached that point where that part is completely set. I, I have the time to, to balance them.
And one quick follow-up. Yeah, I rescheduled patients this afternoon, because I found out about this last week too. So to get here by four o'clock...
Was hard.
I'm usually in the office, my last patient's at 4:30, which means I'm lucky to get out of there at 5:15 or 5:30. So, yeah, there are times when you have to do those kind of things in this job. And I should have talked to more people, because Thursdays was, they, I was going to be the city commissioner. But they don't tell you about the other committees that you're on, they don't, not everybody gets told that. But there are other days that you have other things, there are lunches you go to, there are weekend things. It's not just Thursdays, two days a month.
And that's why, at the end, I was going to ask you kind of how it worked exactly. I've read about it, and I've heard some... I've read about it and I've heard some things. I just didn't know how it worked exactly.
Everybody should know before this and not after you get in. So, oh yeah, I'm going to have to take this time off.
I do think it's safe to say that this was not on any of our calendars two weeks ago.
No, and luckily, most people don't want to go to the dentist anyway. So if I cancel them later, like, okay, that's fine. So.
Well, that's not the way to think about it.
That's what they tell me.
I hear it's like fourteen to get there. Let me ask another question, just to kind of change it up a bit. You talk about reading a large volume of material. One of the things we've talked about relative to this search process is the strategic plan that Commissioner Brock alluded to. And in that plan, we identify four priority areas. And I'd be curious to have you speak to either the four or one of them as, as the ones that would maybe stand out to you most and, and why.
Are you talking about the forty-five?
No, that's the growth plan, the commission's strategic plan.
My, my, my part on that, I think is, and I was actually going to get to that too, is what is the exact strategy moving forward? What are we doing as far as addressing homelessness? What are we doing with far as truly addressing the drug use? I've seen some things. I've actually camped on my yard at my, at my office. Those are my main concerns. Yes. And I, I'm curious, you know, of where we're headed with that.
Just to follow up on what Commissioner Wise was talking about, our strategic plan addresses four, what I call buckets really, you know, economic vitality, quality of life. And, and under that quality of life, you know, we have objectives on working with our unsheltered, you know, folks in town. It really kind of takes me to another place as well. We have grown a lot. I think our population at census was seventy-five thousand, no telling what it is now. Just go sit through the traffic light out here. But it's not just the population. It's the demographics of our area, which has changed tremendously. Pre-COVID, we were at eighteen percent poverty. We're at about twenty-five percent now and growing. And so there are some of these fundamental issues in our community that, you know, and, and we want everybody to work. But then they don't have housing, nor do they have transportation. So these are kind of problems that we have to really sit back and, and take a hard look at is how we can help lift up the community so everybody can be at their fullest potential if we want to. But with that, you get also a diverse group of, of individuals that can come in small groups to try to influence the commission. And we have a representative form of government. And there are five of us that represent seventy-five thousand, and it's because you can't get seventy-five thousand chairs around this dais.
Right.
So we have to make decisions on behalf of what's best for the community. But our challenge is, and I'm getting to this, this question. How, how do we make sure we understand the needs of the different groups in our city? And because it's, we're not homogeneous, you know, we're, we're made up of a lot of incredible, smart. To you, we've got a lot of people out there. How do you, as a commissioner, you know, approach that?
Approach reaching people?
Uh huh.
Complicated question. That is, that is vast. And I, the changing demog, the influx of people here is a, I don't think any of us saw this post-pandemic, this massive migration. But there would probably have to be some kind of committee established or some kind of workshop to sit down and identify each of these demographics. Because, so you said it was potentially twenty-five percent?
In poverty.
Okay. I know one thing that could be addressed that I found on internet searches. As far as the people that are in poverty, I believe the number was a hundred and eighty houses that are considered just non-viable. They can't, you know, they, they need to be demolished. I don't know why we can't, is, why we can't get incentives to builders to help with that. I think that would really help, you know, domicile some people. I think that would reach and would clean some things up maybe. But it would take a lot of interaction, maybe some kind of, there had to be a group that actually went out to that. But getting those houses, we either need to flatten those houses or do something to make them livable. And, and I think it could be done. They're just sitting there and it would solve a lot of the problems. As far as the other, I think we've got so much social media ability, we can interact with all kinds of demographics and get people more interested into the, the inner workings of the city.
Any follow-up to that, Jenny? So going through this process is unexpected for me. And there's not a guidebook on how to do it and how to determine who you want to interview in these kind of situations. So I looked at all the candidates and, and had some criteria that was really important to me. So one that, with, with you, I think you've got a ton of great character references that, that came in. But as far as being a commissioner, really a lot of what we see on a day-to-day basis is going to be budget-related or a lot of it with land use, annexation, rezoning. This one's, I think there are a lot of opportunities in the city to get a lot of experience on understanding when that's appropriate, when it's not appropriate. I think the planning commission might be more like when it's appropriate. The city commission level might be more of what does the community want as a whole also? And I know now you have a little more time. I think for me, appointing somebody's, like Joe said earlier, the bar is exceptionally high for me because we're representing seventy-five thousand people to make sure the next person is not voter. So you don't have a lot of experience with that. How, how can you overcome that when you're making, you know, on, on Thursday, there may be some rezoning requests. There may be, this stuff may come very quickly of how to gain that knowledge and experience when you haven't kind of stepped up and done those in the past.
I'll have to get in there and study, which I'm not opposed to doing that. I learn, you know, pretty quick. I can grab some volume material. It's, and I put that in there that if I was chosen, this would be a learning curve for me. And I don't want to have any misgiving or misunderstandings of that. And, but I think I can, I can learn it quickly, especially if needed, which it would be needed. But yes, a lot of it, I think, dare say, common sense, but also just studying. And I know people, I've got several friends that are builders. I've got friends that do real estate. I mean, I can pick their brain real fast and learn a lot of information on that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So I prepared twelve pages of questions because I like to overdo everything. So I have a question on this topic that might give you an opportunity to speak to it without getting into the specifics of, of a request. And so I'm going to pose to you a compliant rezoning request comes, rezoning promising two hundred units near a congested corridor comes to us and we're being asked to vote on it. And the neighbors oppose it. What additional analysis or considerations would you seek before you voted on it beyond just those factors?
So the neighbors have come complaining?
Yes. Oh, yes. Expect that.
Right. So that's what your question is.
Yeah, exactly. That's part of the package, right out of the gate. Yeah.
Well, I think when you have engineers, which we have great engineers in this town.
I heard that.
Yes. And Anthony Todd, I hear, is like the most knowledgeable traffic person. I mean, it comes down to data and not emotion. Of course, like you said, they're going to oppose it, you know? Immediately, they're going to oppose it. It comes down to data. I know they were looking at doing one near, on Princeton, pretty close to my office. And there was a lot of complaining. And when you look at the numbers of what it is and you look at the daily traffic count, which I'm sure we can get all this data. I'm a data-driven person. I think you have to be in this. And get analysis from the professionals in the engineering departments and, and just get the information. And you got to filter out some of the complaining. And, and that's hard because, you know, I'm a soft-hearted person, I guess, so that's hard. But numbers and data don't lie. It's there. It'll work or it, you know, or, you know, maybe not. It's, maybe it's not an exact science, but all of us together are smart people and the engineers are smart. And you can look at that and go, yeah, I think with a really reasonable degree of success, this, or planning, this will be a success. Or, I don't know. At that point, you know, I swear, I'd kind of take guidance from them. I wouldn't let a lot of the noise bother me per se, because that's going to be, like you said, all the time. But I think you would have to be data-driven. You know, give me hard numbers.
Let me add just another caveat to that because another factor that then we have to deal with is we have a housing shortage. So what do we need to be doing for the community at large? Because we don't have enough houses for people.
I know.
So that's, that's just kind of a side piece of information that we have. And the more we turn down, the more we stay at net zero, you know, of gain. So it, it, this is probably one of the biggest things that we're dealing with right now. It's development.
Yes.
And I think in the next five to ten years, it's even going to grow increasingly.
Yes.
So my question to you is, one of the things I always say, you don't want, want to let development outpace infrastructure. Sometimes it's hard to get the infrastructure in because it takes so long.
Right.
So the infrastructure is not paid for by sales taxes and it's usually our, well, we, we do use, yeah, we do. But it's very expensive.
Yes.
So when you're looking.
I was reading about that.
Yeah, when you're looking at the challenges ahead, it is growth and probably large growth and infrastructure and probably large amount of money to, to do that. So as you're facing that kind of thing, that's why we came up with the Horizon 2045 Plan that you referred to just a minute ago. To try to address that. Now, was, are there any things in that plan that you saw and, and read to give you comfort that it's been thought about and how we then begin to implement it?
I thought it was one of the most impressive documents I've ever read, as far as, not in the science world that I live in. It was just extremely well-done and thought out. It was just an impressive piece. I think some of this is out of, out of control. I remember running for election last year and they kept saying, what are, if you're elected, what are you going to do about this? And I'm like, that's not the role of a city commissioner. And we don't have the power to go in there and set interest rates. I mean, I don't know why people thought that. It was baffling to me. But what I'm getting to is, there is my thought on this, and it's very personal for me because both of my sons are in their mid twenties and they have good jobs. They can't buy a house. So we're looking at a supply and demand. That's all it is. It comes back to economics one oh one. And so, and what I have noticed, I think, is there's a little bit of a slowdown in the mass migration here from the, the north and California and such. It seems to be getting a little saturated. And one reason I know that is I will see houses go up for sale. And before, you wouldn't even have a yard sign, you know, back in like, what is this, twenty-five, it's like twenty-three? There wouldn't even be a for sale sign. The house would be gone. And now they're sitting there for weeks and weeks. So I think, I'm not, can't predict the future, but it looks like the slowdown is starting to happen just for various reasons. And I think, I don't know that the market will ever correct and go back to the norm. I think we're kind of in this little transition flux area. But, and now I don't remember your question.
Horizon twenty forty-five.
Anyway, I think, I, I think that's, the plan is solid, from what I could tell. The plan was very solid and very thought out. And I think you, if, I've read so many numbers, but it seems like you all were predicting thirteen percent increase over the next five to ten years, something like that. It's going to take a balancing act. It takes smart people to, to sit up here and, and come up with these decisions. It just does.
I'm going to ask one. Todd, let you finish. Mine's a little more of a test question. And it has to do with, I've joined the commission, didn't know a ton to expect, but we sat down, the, the five commissioners at the time did a public meeting for, we called it a public retreat to kind of get some core things that we want to focus on. And Joe mentioned them a little bit earlier. And when, when we're trying to appoint somebody to kind of fit in with what, a boat that we're trying to row in these areas.
Right.
And so you, you don't have to say them verbatim, but do you know the four things that we want to focus on? And I'm just asking that just because when.
Not exactly, no.
And Joe had mentioned them earlier, but that they are, something that's important to me is making sure the commissioner that we appoint is aligned in, in those and understands them. Because it's really important to kind of distill down what a group of people that have different backgrounds kind of want to work together for. But it's economic vitality, quality of place, future-ready and infrastructure and excellence in city government.
Right.
And so do any of those stand out? Have you kind of looked into, to those and, you know, because we, our strategic plan's pretty thorough and a good publication. So what do you think about those?
I think quality of place, I think it's fantastic here. I think we have some improvements to make and we have hard decisions to make and we have to be on the same page with that for sure. The infrastructure, I was reading through there, that's, for me, that's one of my most concerning. And you actually said that a second ago. I don't understand exactly how we're going to. Because a lot of things in Johnson City are old, like walnut, you know, all the pipes and all the sewer, the, those, those jumped out at me as the most. But quality of place is, is really great. I think we have some improvements to make. I had some ideas for things for more community interactivity. And one of the things I wanted to do, I really wish we could get our youth more involved and get outside. Okay, and put down their phones and, and their iPads. And I was thinking of things that we could do to increase, you know, improve and have, like, we've got that giant field of Founder's Park. I forget how many acres it said it was, but we have that. We could do it. And I think little things like that that would get the community more involved would, would increase the quality of place. As far as the, the strategic part, I think it's dead on. There's some really smart people that have come up with some of these. Does that answer that?
Yeah, it was really just if you, if you kind of know them and understood, because that's kind of what we're focusing on and.
Reading through those, I don't see anything I disagreed with. I mean, I, there's nothing that jumped out at me.
And I think, Todd, we probably got one room for one more and then you could ask us.
Hopefully, you heard this question earlier. I'm going to ask it again. What would be your top three priorities? What do we need to focus on this next year that you would be in office if you're selected?
So I think number one for me is fire, police and EMS. I think that has to, if there are problems, I think those need to be addressed. I think we have to have a, so, so government, if the government's working, its number one priority is protection of the citizens. And I think that, and I'm, I'm pretty sure from what I've read, but I've talked to some pretty high-ranking people in those departments and they, they express some needs, like everybody does. I think that is number one, is to make sure that that is solid, safety of the citizens. And that leads me to second part is safety of the citizens. I'm concerned with the, the uptick in violence. I don't think that's a good look for us. And growing up here in this area, it's always been so safe and now it doesn't seem to be. So I think we need to make some hard decisions on that. And then my, my, my third was, was infrastructure. I was curious, you know, my, I think we have to have a solid plan because if the moving, the development, the new neighborhoods, the, the issue with it is the existing. the development, the new neighborhoods, the issue with it is the existing neighborhoods. Like, I live in the Gump near, you know, those, my house is 75 years old, and I'm sure everything around it is fairly old. That's my, those are my three things. I think we need to be really careful, because if you have a breakdown, everybody's happy until there's no hot water, okay? When that happens, yes, that's a problem. So I know those first two kind of overlap a little, but those are, things are important to me. Yes, sir.
Well, unless there's another question everybody has, if you have some questions for us, and ask away.
You pretty much answered it with the, that was my main question, is normal business, you know, when is it run? Is it mainly Thursdays? What time does it start? I know the meetings are six. How does it work before that? Do you-
Joe, I'll let you chime in and answer that one.
So as a general rule, I think we've sort of blocked out Thursday to be when workshops and meetings happen, and so a lot of times it's an all-day or certainly all-afternoon on Thursday. But then, we're sitting here today deviating from that practice on a Tuesday, and so there's some amount of that that ends up happening. I was asked a while ago, like, what is it, what's involved in being a commissioner? And I didn't answer because I really didn't feel confident in my qual, you know, quantifying that number. And I think it is conservatively probably about 1,000 hours a year. So, you know, some weeks are more, some weeks are less, but it probably comes out to about 20 hours a week. The wild card in that is there are certain seasons of the year where there's more going on. So like, when we go into the first part of the calendar year, we're preparing for the budget year. Our budget year's July 1. And so, really from about February, maybe March on, we start having workshops weekly, and so that number does tick up during that season. But I think for the most part, the recurring business of the commission. Now then, there's the second part of it, which is the yacht christenings and all of that stuff, and those kind of happen all over the calendar and just really randomly.
And we all usually serve on one or two committees. Usually the new commissioner gets put on the planning commission, because that's where you really learn what it's all about. I say that tongue-in-cheek.
No, but seriously, the new commissioner's going on the planning commission.
Yeah, no, but, yeah, I mean, and the committee meetings are at least one to one-and-a-half hours once or twice a month. It just depends on what committee it is. Some of the committees are fiduciary committees, some are just advisory committees. So we have, how many, how many committees?
That are commissioned?
Ask Tricia. 25. She knows, yeah. Yeah, 25, but we don't sit on all those 25.
Right.
There are just some that require a commission seat on there.
And as a commissioner or a new commissioner, the more you can get exposed to that, help you understand what different things you're doing is really important. I think as time goes, you know, my time's limited a little bit, just family and work, and Jenny's, I mean, Jenny's able to get, she's, gets out and is very involved. I also think there's a third part to the commission, is we're here to represent the community, and we all live in our own echo chambers. And so, the amount of time to reach out to other pockets that, that we're not a part of, to make sure you're getting that information and how things are affecting them and their perspective on it, and I think the more that that happens, the better you're representing the community, and that time's not necessarily quantitative, and it can be lunch and social and-
Well, it could be festivals that they want to see us at, and your shopping experience will never be the same again.
Yeah, yeah.
Luckily, I don't shop much. Has it been rewarding for you?
Absolutely. It's been a privilege to serve the people in Johnson City. Absolutely.
And I do want to just chime back in on another fellow dentist, Ralph Van Brockland. I was still pretty young in the community and on some organizations, and I was shocked at how, I was like, how does this guy, I'd be at an 8 o'clock JCA meeting, and he was there, and then he'd be at another meeting at 4:00, and he's still practicing a lot. So I think even as a dentist and making that a priority, he made it a priority. He, to me, we probably didn't align on all of our total thoughts, but he was really an impressive, and I was super glad he represented the community.
Yes.
He was great. I would add, I was asked a number of years ago by a friend who said, what's the best thing about being on the city commission? And I said, well, you know, there are a lot of people I wouldn't otherwise meet, there's things going on in our community that I otherwise wouldn't know about, and there's just a lot good going on. And he said, well, what's the worst thing? And I said, well, there's a lot of people I end up getting to meet, and there's a lot of things going on in our community I otherwise wouldn't know about. And so, it comes with its good, and it comes with its challenges, and they are pretty consistent.
Okay.
And the more people you meet, the more things you get invited to. Now, some are good, and some are not as fun to go to, but, you know, being in Rotary and being a city commissioner, I go to a bunch of Rotary things. And being a doctor, I'm on the EMS board, and I get moved up to assistant to the chairman, and when the chairman's an ER doc and he doesn't show up, guess who runs all the meets?
He runs the whole-
The guy who's the assistant chairman. So everything is, depending on what you do and what you're interested in, but you get to see more of the city than almost anybody else does.
Yeah, it seems incredibly rewarding.
Meet more of the citizens for different things that you do. So that's been rewarding too.
Yeah, I can tell you love it, all of you love it.
We're about out of time. Do you have any other questions you want to follow up with?
Do not believe so.
That sounds great. Well, I appreciate you, Dr. West, one more.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. And right now, I think we'll take a short recess for about 20 minutes, and I'll call
Welcome back. Thanks, everybody, for giving us the time to take a short little break. And we'll get started again with the next candidate, Whitney Getz. Ms. Getz, I'll just remind you how we'll move forward. If you can just give us a few minutes to tell us about yourself, why you're interested, your qualifications. We'll ask you questions for about 35 minutes and then at the end we can follow up with some questions you have for us.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I am Whitney Getz. I was born, raised, and educated here in Johnson City. Was fortunate to go to Sainso High School, East Tennessee State University, and Milligan, then College, Milligan University now. After graduating, I worked in the area for a little while in the healthcare space and then had the opportunity to move to Washington DC and work for a United States Senator. Met my husband there. Had to go all the way to DC to meet a good Tennessee boy. But we got married and moved to Nashville where we spent a number of years. Our two sons were born there. And when John and I were trying to figure out where do we really want to set down roots? Where do we want to raise our boys? What type of environment do we want to raise our boys in? Johnson City was the clear answer. So I had the opportunity to come home in 2020 for the position I hold currently at East Tennessee State University as the Executive Director of the Alumni Association. So that's a little bit about me up to this point. I've always had a heart for public service, with public service kind of being the cornerstone of my positions, both at the state and federal level and now in higher education leadership. And there's always been an interest in taking that public service to the next level. So with this opportunity, I really feel like I have the opportunity to give back to the community that's been so good to me. Thank you.
Sounds great. Yeah, I mean, yeah, Todd, we'll let you, Dr. Fowler, have the first question.
I know you're from here and been here a long time and back here. One of the things we deal with are different neighborhoods in our town and different people live different places. There's some being developed, some are not being developed. How would you or what would you do to help us ensure that all of our neighborhoods, not just downtown, not the big, nice sprawling suburban developments, get equal attention? What would you do to do that with our city?
That's a great question. I think we've done a really good job of being strategic with some of our different plans, both the Horizon Plan, but the Strategic Plan. But I think we've looked at the city and from a comprehensive view and making sure that we are looking at opportunities for growth, where we can invest, you know, our dollars. But also, I think that's one of the beautiful parts about Johnson City. What brings us together is how different we are, both visually as well as the people that live there. So I think as we look to growth, as we look to how we want to invest those dollars, looking at those plans that very wise people have put together. And that's how I think we should look to the growth.
Commissioner Brock, do you?
I do. Thank you, Whitney. I have a lot of questions. I'm going to start with this one, which is very functional as a commissioner, as a board member, and thinking about how we do our work and what advantages that we could have. You have a very impressive work experience. I think one of the first times I ever ran into you as an adult, you were in Senator Corker's office. I'm going to go ahead and say his name, who I think was one of the best senators for the state of Tennessee completely. And then you spent a number of years in the Department of Treasury in Nashville and now with East Tennessee State University. My question is, have you continued to keep those relationships with those offices, like at the federal level and particularly at the state level? Because as we do planning, sometimes we don't even think about which direction we could go to get assistance or help. So kind of explain a little bit about your relationships with those two, particularly those two entities, but also ETSU as well.
That's a great question. And I think one common theme that all of my positions, those that you've mentioned and then others in volunteer capacities, it's all about relationships. I think that's something that I learned, you know, even as a student, the value of relationships and the importance of relationships. But those relationships, they're not built overnight. I think it's about developing trust and working together. So when I worked in the Senate and then also a lot of that happened when I worked in Nashville. One of my roles in Nashville was with the state treasurer. I was responsible for his staffing of boards and commissions. And as a constitutional officer, a lot of the responsibilities for making decisions about funding, about the direction of the state budget, about just a variety of different issues that really touch communities, those decisions are made there at the level of the boards and commissions. Those individuals are either elected by the General Assembly or appointed by the governor. In the case of my boss, he was elected by the members of the General Assembly. But those boards, there's a lot of work that goes into making those decisions, the items that are on those agendas. You know, for the example of the state funding board, I staffed the treasurer on that board. And the Department of Economic and Community Development would bring us proposals, funding requests, projects that they would like to fund in certain communities. And I was that first line of defense. I was asking the questions, making sure that my boss was prepared to make a decision on giving the very hard-earned taxpayer dollars to these communities to invest in economic development projects. So, you know, I've been in the room when the decision makers are making those decisions. I've asked the questions. I've been part of that vetting process. I have the relationships with those individuals. And I think that's something, you know, we worked very hard. We asked a lot of good questions. Those relationships are still there and things- there, and things I'm very proud of. So I do think if I am given the opportunity to serve with this body, I think that is something that I could bring to the table in a way that I can enhance the skill set of the commission, the current commission.
Very good. It's always good to have kind of some upfront knowledge about where you could go with something, instead of we're going to do all this planning, and then we're going to try to figure out what to do with it, you know?
And it's a complex system, and one that is always changing and evolving. And, you know, one thing, you never stop learning when you work in government. And I'm sure that you all have seen that in your service. You have to learn every week, both for the boards that you staff or that you represent, and then also the items that are put on your agenda for each meeting. You've got to learn a whole lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm going to ask a question. If appointed as a commissioner, how do you navigate the providing policy direction as the commission while allowing the city manager and staff to handle administration?
Well, I think that's something that I would learn with time, of course. But I do think that, you know, learning the policy is extremely important, but also giving the city manager the opportunity to lead the staff. Learning, you know, the ins and outs of the different departments so that you can help guide policy, but also supporting the staff, and being able to help really support creating a culture among city employees, one that is constituent and customer-focused, because the citizens are our constituents and our customers. So I think knowing the policy, working with the city manager, working with the city staff, to collectively work together to represent our citizens and provide the very best constituent and customer service for them.
Dr. Fowler?
I talked about balance before up here, and it's not easy for active people to balance everything that you're doing in your personal life, your professional life, and then your city life.
Right.
How is going to be your approach to family, being a mom of two young boys, the wife of your husband, and your employment, plus the city? How are we going to balance that?
That's a great question, and one that I think all working parents have to figure out. I think first and foremost, you have to have a good team. My husband and I have always operated in a team environment. But we have a great family and a great community support system. That was one of the reasons that we decided to move to Johnson City, is the community and the friendships. I think my friends, we all kind of raise each other's kids and support each other in our parenting. But from a balanced perspective, you know, it's been the last few months that my husband and I have really been praying about the direction of our family, where we want to see ourselves going. And we decided, and I shared with the university about a month ago, that I'd like to step back from working full-time, to be able to focus on both being present as a mom, but being able to create some margin in my schedule to develop, you know, and really prepare for giving back to the community and being able to serve in different capacities. This wasn't on the bingo card when we were originally kind of making those plans, but I don't think it is a mistake. I think, you know, as we go into the new year, when I step away from working full-time, I will be able to balance very well, being a mom, being a wife, being a sister, an aunt, a daughter, and given the opportunity, a community servant.
It wasn't on our plan, on our bingo card.
I know.
So we understand.
But I'm glad we're all here together.
Whitney, we talked about earlier that we got together and had a strategic plan that we devised for where we wanted to focus. Do any of those stand out to you, and that you feel like you could kind of get in a boat with four people that's kind of rowing, and add to it, and bring value to that? And how would that look?
Well, I think the strategic plan is a guide, and if given the opportunity to serve with you, knowing what your vision and your priorities are, and where you all see this city going, I think is really important. And it really helps if I am selected, being the new person, to know, hey, these are the priorities. We have spent a lot of time developing the strategic plan, you know, having your subject matter experts come in and talk about them. So, you know, with each area, I think there are aspects of the strategic plan that I think are really important. One that really sticks out to me, and one that I think I could be really passionate about, is excellence in city government. Commissioner Brock had mentioned working for Senator Corker. That was something that was really instilled in us, was the value of great constituent service. It was being responsive. It was listening. I learned so many skills from that position. I have said that, you know, one of the best things about working in that position was the time that I spent on the phone talking to constituents. It was also the hardest job I have ever had, spending all day talking to constituents and figuring out with them how to help them get the services they need, or just listening to the issues that were close to their heart. So I think, you know, that's an area that I thought was really valuable, and one that I could contribute to. But also quality of place. I think, you know, I've had the opportunity in the last week to have a number of conversations with folks that I greatly respect, and I wish I could attribute this to one person, but they said, people vote with their feet. And I think people are voting with their feet every day. They want to live in a place like Johnson City. John and I, we voted with our feet. We came to Johnson City. We wanted to be a part of the community that was so good to me, that gave me so many opportunities. But we wanted to invest in the community, a community where we could raise our boys and provide them the best quality of life possible. So I think those are two areas that really stuck out to me, although I think it's a very comprehensive and well-thought-out plan, and one that I think is very much of value as someone that is coming in potentially on the tail end of all of your terms of, you know, to complete a term, to know this is where we want to go, and this is how we can get there. So, thank you.
Well, let's pull the layer off the onion on quality of, we call it quality of place, because our role in city government is really infrastructure. And so, once we had the quality of place, we began to look at what our targets would be. Certainly, families and children were a big, big part of that. And so, we looked at the investment of infrastructure in what we call the built environment. Tannery Knobs is a built environment. You have small children, and you associate with other parents who have small children. As you said, you raise each other's children, but grandparents help a lot too.
They sure do. Couldn't do it without them. I'm very blessed.
But what are some other ideas? This is the time to kind of be your imagination. So then, over the next five years, in terms of policy or initiatives, in the quality of place space, what are some ideas that you maybe have been thinking about, or you've heard within your friends group with children?
Right.
For them talking about?
Well, a couple of things come to mind, not just from friends, but I have been really fortunate, in my current position, to work in the Model Mill Building, and to look out my window and see the transformation that has taken place. And we were all so excited to officially cut the ribbon just a few short days ago. But that, to me, is a good example of, you know, both revitalization and economic development and all of those things. But we definitely had some infrastructure that we needed to address, some issues there, but in a beautiful way. Another example that I have seen, that I get to see frequently when I'm on campus at ETSU, I think, you know, many of us here went to school at ETSU or worked there. And when we were there, there was a lot of pavement. And I was able to see a presentation recently, and there was an image of what is now the University Commons, and it was a parking lot. I am sure when I was there, there were 100 spaces, but I was told there were just 20. When I was circling, late for class, thinking I could get one of those spaces, I thought there was a lot more. But we have been really fortunate on campus to see a transformation of a removal of pavement and an integration of green. And there are definitely parking places, and there are places where people can park and get to where they need to go. But if you walk from that parking lot to the Culp Center, you walk through a beautiful green environment, but you're also seeing community building spaces. Students aren't just popping into buildings and leaving. They're gathering. They're studying together. And I think as we look ahead, and I know this is not exactly a five-year initiative, but how can we create these spaces that are functional, that also meet the expectations of, you know, updating infrastructure or expanding infrastructure, but also creating a beautiful community space? I think we've seen that very, very clearly with what you all invested in downtown, with the parks. But I love to see the students gathering. My kids, when they come to campus, love to go down the slide. And I think that that's something that I've seen in the community with playgrounds and green spaces, but it's a place where people can gather while meeting the needs of the community from an infrastructure perspective.
Get two furs out of it.
Absolutely.
Have you gone down the slide?
Yes, I have.
Thank you.
It wasn't pretty.
That was not my question.
That was not the question.
That was not my question.
I'll take another one.
But I was a little curious. I would be interested to have you speak to what you see the most important responsibilities of a city commissioner being, and how you would intend to kind of step into that role very quickly in an interim position.
That's a great question. You know, I think it's being a good steward of the resources that have been given to you. And as a commissioner, I believe that you wear a number of hats. It's making decisions on behalf of the 75,000 Johnson City residents. And those residents may have different life experiences. They may live in different communities. They may be different ages and have different goals. So I think being a good steward of the resources and making good decisions are something that are, should be the top priority when looking at this, but with a service-minded, wise position.
I can take a question onto that.
Okay.
Because you set it up perfectly. You have people with all different parts of town, different likes and dislikes. And I don't know, there was a saying one time, that whatever decision you made, 13% of the people didn't like it. So I think that percentage has gone up a little bit, right? So how would you address, you have to make a tough decision, and yet you still have a group of people who don't, really vehemently do not want you to make that decision. What's your approach? What's your, you know, suggestions to a commission to say, how do we address that? Maybe upfront, before the decision's made, or if you have to do it after the fact? But what are your thoughts about that? And we know we have some work to do there.
Right. It's listening, listening to individuals that it impacts, the communities that, you know, will be impacted. I think, you know, the option of public comment is really important, but also being visible and being available, being out in the community, meeting residents where they are. I think all of those things are really important. And at the end of the day, asking yourself what's in the best interest of Johnson City, and looking at it through that lens. You're never going to make everybody happy, but if you listen to perspectives, and you think about it from the perspective of what is best for Johnson City, there will be people that will be disappointed, but hopefully they will respect you as being wise and thinking about it from that perspective. Thanks.
I can follow up on that. I am a people pleaser. My wife said I should never do this, because I like everybody to like me. I don't like making enemies of things. That is hard for me. And I know there are decisions I made that people did not agree with. I try to make the best decision. How are you going to handle that? Because I know you're from here, and you know a lot of people. So how are you going to handle that with the people that don't like your decisions?
Yeah. I've made tough decisions before in different roles. And I think at the end of the day, people know you. And the people that know me know I would approach problem-solving, as I outlined, by listening, but also making that decision in the best interest of Johnson City. So I think, you know, at the end of the day, have to be self-reflective. And people that know me would know my heart, and hopefully those that don't know me would get the opportunity to know me as well.
And kind of a follow-up, and I'm not really sure where the question lies in it, but when we're up here, and I think temperament's very important from perspective of a commissioner, listening to the community, when we're appointing somebody, we have the chance to kind of measure that. When somebody's being elected, you know, we're kind of going to have somebody join with us. But when you have somebody is upset, and managing the temper, and making sure that everybody keeps their composure, is very important to, I think, making sure people, because everybody that's upset has a reason to them of why. So how can you manage the temperament? How would you handle those situations? And is there any experiences in the past where you've had to make difficult decisions?
Yeah.
And had to show empathy at the same time?
Yeah, that's a great question. Reflecting back on my time answering phones in a Senate office, people don't call and mostly say, hey, thank you for passing a budget. Thank you for making sure that, you know, XYZ is in place. They call because they are unhappy about something or they have a need. And sometimes, they just want to be heard. So I think it's listening. At the end of the day, if we get to the core of somebody's concern, we all want Johnson City to be a great place. And I think when we can come to that common understanding that I want Johnson City to be a great place, I love Johnson City, you love Johnson City, you want Johnson City to be a great place, there's your first bit of common ground. And I think when you find common ground, you can take that far. But sometimes, people just want to be heard. And I think that's something that I've been able to do in previous positions. And I think that's something that, in this role, is critical.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Whitney, on your community and civic leadership, you stay quite busy on that front as well. I was really kind of taking, you were on the ETSU 125.
I was. I was on the Fiscal Sustainability Task Force.
So tell me about, I was intrigued by fiscal sustainability and what you really accomplished. And talk about it in terms of, like, how could that apply to the city?
Yeah. So that strategic process, I was not part of the larger board. I was one of the task forces. There were a variety of different appointments to different groups. Some were focused more on the academic side. The one that I was appointed to is Fiscal Sustainability. And there were a variety of different individuals, folks from inside the university and outside the university. And it was really, it was early on in my time at ETSU, so I, it was very eye-opening. Really, our initiative was to brainstorm.
It needs a rest.
Yeah.
Give it a minute.
There you go.
Are we back?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. What are some ways that we can be creative in brainstorming how we can be fiscally responsible, but also what are some other opportunities for revenue? And really, that task force put together a lot of recommendations and ideas, and that was presented to the larger ETSU 125 Chapter Two group. But we were thinking, okay, the perspective I brought to that was really from experience in state government and the federal government, and just how can we create an environment that wants to... that wants to recruit and retain the best employees, the best students, to create the best employees for the people of the region? So that was that process. I really enjoyed it. I got to know folks that were on the academic side that I may not have had the opportunity to connect with, but also hear the perspective of community members. So I really enjoyed that and learned a lot early on in my time at ETSU about the university and kind of an introduction to higher education.
So you have experience in the strategic planning process and process improvement, quality initiatives, things of that nature?
Yes, I think, you know, different aspects of different times in my career, I've been involved in strategic planning, but also in volunteer work. I was very involved when we lived in Nashville, in the Junior League of Nashville, and I was very fortunate from early on to kind of jump into serving on different committees. And I was fortunate at the end of my time to serve as the treasurer of the Junior League of Nashville, one of the largest leagues in the country. And through that, there was a lot of strategic planning, a lot of developing, you know, different measurement tools for the partner organizations that we worked with. And I learned so much in managing a budget. You know, there's nothing like, you know, on-the-ground training in how to do that. So that was, I sat on the executive committee for that league. So both in the professional environment, as well as volunteer environments, I've been involved in strategic planning. I really enjoy it. I'm kind of a strategic planning nerd. I love to look at things from different perspectives, think into the future. What, you know, why do we do the things we do? Is this the best, most efficient, most effective way to do that? Are we meeting the expectations that are set out before us with this process? Sometimes the answer is, yes, we're doing all the right things. And sometimes it's, maybe we need to think about this. Maybe we need to use the resources in a different way. And sometimes it's, hey, delete, start all over. So I really enjoy that process and one that, if given the opportunity to serve, I think I could be a great asset to this body.
So Johnson City faces ongoing infrastructure needs, streets, utilities, parks, et cetera. What's your framework for prioritizing capital projects when revenues are relatively flat and construction prices are only going up?
That's a challenge, one that I think individuals in all levels of government are having to make. I think it's really prioritizing, the word that she said, looking at what's the immediate needs. But looking at it through the lens of these are a defined amount of resources, we need to be good stewards, but also planning for the future. So it's taking those priorities, and that's something we had to do every year with the state budget. One of the other boards and commissions that I sat on was the Tennessee Higher, well, Staffing, sorry, the Tennessee Higher Education Commission. And that's something that THEC does every year. Every university brings forward different capital projects, and they have to make priorities. They have to say, okay, this is something we need to address now. This is something we would love to address, but we might not be able to. But hey, it's on the list, maybe we move it up next year. So I think making that priority list, looking at your resources, making sure that you are using those in the best, most effective way. It's tough, and you have to tell some people no, you have to tell some people not right now. But it's, you know, if you do it with data, with long-range planning in mind, I think, you know, that's the best way to approach some of those priority projects.
Well, I asked this earlier, Sue. What are your three top priorities? If you're chosen to be on the city commission for this next year, what three things would you really like to see done?
Well, I think the number one thing that we're all responsible for is budget. So I think that's something that jumping right in would have to become very familiar with. In the case of this being an appointment, there's not been as much time to do homework in that area, so I think it would definitely be an area we've got to jump right into. But I think you all have really lined out what the priorities are through the strategic plan. So, you know, looking at, knowing if appointed, I have a year to help knock off some of these things on the strategic plan, looking at where you all have already met those expectations, I think would help us prioritize, you know, the other issues on that list. You know, things that are important to me, I think I got to address, you know, in the prior question. But, you know, I think we have to prioritize what our greatest responsibility is, and one of those is passing a smart, balanced budget, but also making sure that essential functions and city residents' needs are met. Like I said, people don't call and say, thank you for passing a budget. They call when they have issues with their water, or they have issues with their roads. So I think if we're thinking about priority items, it's the budget, making sure city needs and essential functions are met. That bucket, you know, captures, you know, supporting the school system, safety, all of those functions. And then third, it's planning for the future. It's what, okay, what have we accomplished with the strategic plan? What can we do in the immediate next year, but also looking forward? What issues are we going to need to address? You've got a great plan, you all have done the hard work in developing that, now it's just time to get to work on it. Thank you.
Well, I'm just seeing if there's any last questions for each one of us, and then we'll get with Whitney Askins.
I have one more. I get to answer the question.
Okay.
Ask the question and not answer it. As we've talked about, actually, it's been well over 25 or 30 years, and the city of Johnson City has raised property taxes twice. So amazingly, it's our investments into the community has created organic growth that we've, you know, we've been able to produce the revenues, but sometimes hasn't been the case. Under what conditions would you consider a tax increase for property taxes?
It's a very difficult decision, and one that would impact all Johnson City residents. You know, I think it's kind of going back to that priority. Where could we, how could we avoid, I think is important, looking at efficiencies? Are we using these dollars in the best way possible? You know, what is our revenue stream? And, you know, I think property tax would be the very last, the last option. So I think it's being wise, looking at where, how could we avoid it before even going down that path? So that's how I would approach making a decision like that. I think it would be one that collectively would be a very difficult one for this body to make.
We should have had a lightning round. Like, just really quick, we should make a note of that in case the future commissions know, have a lightning round. Yeah. No, we're not going to do it to the lights, dude, that's not fair. I don't have any more questions.
So what kind of questions do you have for us?
I do, I have some questions, but before I jump into those, I want to tell you thank you. Thank you for saying yes to service. I think, you know, the five of us have had a very short time to make the decision if we wanted to jump into public service, but you all had a little more time, and I know that that was a tough decision. Your families have made sacrifices, you make sacrifices, so thank you for saying yes. And thank you for this process. I feel like you all have done a remarkable job of being transparent, involving community members, both inviting us to say yes to serving and then receiving community feedback. So I wanted to say thank you in case we go a little long on questions, so. And I don't have a preference who would like to answer, so I'll just ask it, and you all can tell me who would like to. I think, you know, speaking of transparency, the commission has made good strides in being more transparent to the public. Do you have any thoughts about how that can continue moving forward?
Sounds like a good one for show-wise. Well, I certainly drew the short straw. You know, I've thought a lot about the word transparency, and I think there's some challenge in that word because I think it can kind of mean a lot of different things to different people. I think dictionary definition of the word transparency is something that holds up to scrutiny. And I think we've been transparent in the sense of holding up to scrutiny. Sometimes I see people use the word transparency, but what they really mean is I didn't get my preferred outcome. And that's not transparency, that's a preferred outcome. And I understand that. I think there is a point at which transparency is kind of tricky because some questions don't have answers. And so, for example, in the wake of the vacancy being created by the resignation, the commission didn't really say anything for several days because we hadn't been together to ask the questions, to come up with the answers, to have something to say. And so I think what people were interpreting as our silence, oh, it's this lack of transparency. No, no, really, what it is, we have no idea what we're going to do yet.
You're creating a process.
Because we have not yet had that opportunity to have the public meeting, to have the conversation, to talk about process. And so I think sometimes, you know, about the only way I know to achieve true transparency in the way that I think some people mean it would be to like somehow allow you access to all of our thoughts individually. And at some point, some questions don't yet have answers. But I think what we have done is in instances where there is information that might help give context, we've put that out on the website so that you can read through everything we've read through. I mean, there's a number of really hot topics in our community, and I don't know anything that you couldn't know by reading the website on the very same topic. I mean, the only thing I know is our attorney's opinions of the legal merits of the case, but beyond that, you have access to every piece of information.
Right.
That we have.
Let me add to it in just a little bit different way. We have all the tools that the state of Tennessee gives us for complete transparency. We have public input at our meetings. Anybody can sign up and speak. There have to be some rules around it, or it could take over a meeting. We have to have certain decorum about doing the people's business. So we have public input at every meeting, and if there's something on the agenda, you can speak again, you know? Secondly, we have the sunshine law. And what Joe was saying is we hadn't gotten together is because we couldn't get together until we could notice a public meeting for us to talk about what we're going to do. And so we don't meet in a back room. People are going to have to just understand that we can't meet in a back room. If we do, and somebody finds out about it, and we've made a vote, then that vote can be turned around. Is that correct, Mr. Sealy? There.
That's correct.
That's right. Now, I think, plus, every one of our phone numbers are on our website. People have called me through all this stuff. They say, can I meet you in your office? And I say, which one, my car or McDonald's? We don't have offices here. We don't. But I'll meet people, I'll meet, you know, one-on-one with people or, you know, in a small group to be able to talk openly, and we do that. Now, we went through a very rough time here this past year because our attorneys told us we could not speak. And that made it very difficult because we knew that the public that don't know everything I'm saying right here, what Joe said, are going like, well, they're covering something up, right?
Can I add something? The attorneys didn't say we couldn't talk. The attorneys helped us understand the dire consequences of us talking too freely.
Right.
And I think there's a big difference. And so it's not that we've been told we are or aren't allowed to talk, it's that we fully understand the potential consequences of speaking too quickly.
Kind of very well.
So I think probably we need to expand the ways that we interact with the public. My preference is to go to more of their community meetings, you know, go speak to the DAR, go speak to various groups and clubs, and talk about different aspects of the commission. So we do have work to do.
Yeah, we do a great job.
And I'll follow up, just being new in my perspective, and I think the way the city's set up is remarkably transparent because we don't have an elected mayor. There are five commissioners that, as Joe said, each have our own brain, and, you know, we all come from different backgrounds, and so we don't have this unified idea about stuff. We have to work through it and deliberate in a public setting. I think it really helps, I think with the state of misinformation that can be out there and people listening to their echo chambers that they feel is resonating their own ideas, I think finding a way, and I think it's important to say, because I think it's important for all of us to do, is to make sure the community here feels like we're their neighbors. Joe used that word the other day, and we are, we're just neighbors. We're not these high-paid politicians that I think can be the perception. We're just part of the community, we're accessible, you know, we're not sitting on a diocese because we want to be up high looking down, we're there just to kind of manage a professional business meeting to get business done. And I know it's hard in public comment to not have a debate back and forth, and I know that can be hard to do the active listening side because people want a response. You know, they want to be heard, but they want to feel like they're heard. But I think working through that, following up with phone calls and saying, hey, we're just neighbors, and we may not see eye to eye on the answer, but I think that can help the transparency is when people start realizing that that's the case.
That's great.
So, time for one more question.
I've got, okay, I have one more question. The dynamics of the person you select will have a great impact on how the commission works together. A year from now, you're reflecting on the service of the individual you select. Let's say this person's done a great job. What would that look like, and what is important to you?
I can answer that. First of all, that the person has courage, that we have to make decisions from time to time that would be easy to go like, well, I'm going to go to the back room, and maybe somebody else will talk about that. But you can't. And you have to come out and be very clear about why you're going to vote one way or another, you know? I would describe that person as someone that I'm very proud to serve with, and that is creative, imaginative, who will not shy away from offering what they think about the issue that's being discussed at that time. We need to hear from everybody sitting on this commission in the right setting. I would feel very good about the public, you know, when we're out in the public and they go like, you guys did a good job, you know, finding that person. And so it is just really to help build the team here that we can be, a commission that people can be proud of because they're proud of their city.
Great answer. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll wrap up with that one, but thank you for your time and
Thank you.
... your willingness to serve our community.
No, thank you for the opportunity to be part of this process.
Look at that count.
Wow. Thank you.
Did I hit that?
Thank you.
So we'll move right into the next, Ms. Timbra Aldridge.
Hello.
Hi there. Ms. Aldridge, just to remind you, we'll give you a little bit of time to tell us about yourself, why you're interested, what's important to you, and we'll ask you a few questions for about 35 minutes, and finish it up with the questions you have for us.
Okay, sure. My name is Timbra Aldridge, and I certainly appreciate the opportunity to be with you all tonight. I did not grow up in Johnson City. I came to Johnson City in 1977, and as I was going to Milligan College. And I had always lived in a big city, West Palm Beach, Atlanta, and so my intentions was to always go back there until I met a homegrown Johnson City boy. And so I married Jeff Aldridge, and, you know, again, he was from Johnson City, I stayed here, it was the best decision I ever made in my life. We have raised three wonderful girls. You know, all three of them went to Science Hill. Jeff has been an administrator at Science Hill, he's now the assistant athletic director there. I have had a, both of us have our teaching degree, however, I felt like I needed to go a different direction so that one of us... to go a different direction so that one of us could make a living. And so, I went into property management and managed all the First American Banks, which are now region banks. And my territory was all the way to Roanoke, Virginia. I had multiple tenants that I was responsible for, for leasing and managing their construction and that sort of thing. I did that for about 19 years. And then, I went to Tuscom College and was the director of facilities there and was over, you know, of course, the whole facilities. I was definitely, worked very, very closely with Scott and Iswanger in all the athletic fields and getting them all ready for ball games. I was very instrumental in building four new apartment buildings and also getting prepared to build a brand-new library. And right when I left, I had just started building the stadium. And I wasn't looking for a job, but, you know, 45 minutes away is a long time, and especially when you have three small daughters. And my mom kept pushing me to send my resume into the mall at Johnson City. There was an operations job available there. So, I finally, she talked me finally into it. I got the job. Within a year, I became the general manager. And there for 19 years, I was the general manager of the mall at Johnson City. And had lots and lots of experience at the mall. It was a very good experience. And the good Lord has, has kind of prepared me each step of the way for the next step. And so, in 2023, I retired. And for two months, I didn't do a whole lot. I'm the president of the Johnson City School Foundation. And so, I was busy working on our biggest fundraiser. And I couldn't, I couldn't do it. So, I started looking, what could I, what could I get myself into? And so, I went ahead and started substituting, which people think I'm absolutely insane for doing that. But honestly, I found my niche at the middle school. I fell in love there. I loved those kids. And I did that for two years. And then, this year, I became responsible for in-school suspension. So, yeah.
Okay.
I know. I know. People think I'm absolutely crazy. But as far as my service goes, being the general manager of the mall at Johnson City, obviously, I was very, very involved with the Chamber of Commerce. And that kind of opened up a lot of doors for me. And from there, I became a board member for the Johnson City, or JCDAs. And I was on the JCDAs for quite a while. And, you know, that's when we were talking about the John Sevier, there's just a lot of things were happening, a lot of great things were starting to happen in downtown Johnson City. Then, I've been on summit leadership board. I've been, like I said, on the school foundation for probably nine years now, as the president for the last two years. And I currently sit on the planning commission. And I am also on the Horizon zoning, or, excuse me, the historic zoning commission. So, that's kind of my public service. And so, I'm excited about the possibility of this next role and continuing my service with the community.
Timbra, thanks for coming. And you have a very broad experience in this community, particularly with committees and boards and commissions and all that, which gives you a little bit better insight into the city, probably. So, my question is, what do you see the most pressing issues that are facing Johnson City now?
Well, the housing, the affordable housing shortage, I think, is one of the pressing issues that a lot of communities are facing, but especially Johnson City. And so, I think it's important that we have a great plan together. I think that JC Build, having, putting that together and taught, I have to give you a lot of credit for coming up with that idea. But I think that is fabulous and something that we've really needed. I can remember being a general manager of the mall and coming to these chamber meetings and, you know, talking about projects and that sort of thing, and meeting with the building chief and that sort of thing. And it used to be to where, you know, the city would sit there and say, this is what you've got to do in order to build here. You know, whereas other cities were saying, what can we do to help you? And I've seen that change so much over the years. And I think JC Build is going to be great in getting that relationship with the developers, the contractors, with all the business leaders and that sort of thing. I think that's going to be great. So, I think that's, you know, that's kind of the important thing is, is the housing. I think along with that housing and with the growth of that comes infrastructure. You know, on the planning commission, we hear all the time about roads, about how the roads, it's too much traffic. You know, people, you know, you can't get through anywhere because the roads are too small or they won't cover it. So, I think that's going to be the next thing, is that we've got to pay attention to the infrastructure with the growth in the housing. Thank you.
I didn't want anyone to have a hand-me-down question, so I just have a lot of questions. And so, this one, I think you have in your background. Share a time you've supported an unpopular but fiscally responsible decision and how you communicated it.
Okay. Well, there's been a lot of times that I've had to make decisions. But, you know, probably one of you all might think is comical, but it was very stressful, was I absolutely hated it when it snowed. I hated it. My morning started at 4:00 in the morning with phone calls to my operations director, my snow removal guy, my maintenance people. And I had to make the decision, do I open a 500,000-square-foot building and lose that, you know, and gain the revenue or lose it? And it was a very unpopular decision when I opened the mall. But I had to take that into consideration, that there are people out there that needed to shop, you know, and people needed to make money and that sort of thing. And so, there was many times where I was called some very unpopular things by opening the mall because it snowed. So, that's probably, I know that's one of the things I don't miss one bit. I enjoy it now when it snows. And that was a very stressful decision that I always had to make.
I guess one of the things along that same line is how to balance what is popular for what people may want versus what's right for the long-term health of our city. Now, how would you handle that and how would you go about figuring that out?
Well, I think, you know, I think it's always important to listen, to figure out, do your homework, figure out what, what is really the issues. And then, I think it's important that once you have, you know, you have your issues and you understand them, you listen to people, you want to have compassion for them, but you have to make the decision that's best for the city. And I have no problem in doing that. You know, again, I've had to make very unpopular decisions before, and I feel extremely comfortable in doing that. And I think it's very important that, that we don't, don't allow our emotions or our connections, maybe with people, to sway our decisions.
Ginny, well, I'll let you go. I'm trying to process what I want to ask. I mean, you've, you've spent on, about it right.
I have a question. Go ahead. Timbra, you were involved as the planning commissioner of the Horizon 2045
Absolutely.
document. And that took like two years. Is that
It did.
Is that correct? You want to give us kind of your high-level thoughts about that document? Because now, we're at the point of implementation. So, what are your recommendations on how that gets implemented?
Sure. It was, it was a tough two years. Lots and lots of meetings, lots of planning. As a matter of fact, right now, our, the planning commission is coming up with the priorities in the next five years. And we've all had to kind of weigh them on what we think is the most priority. But, you know, I think it's, it's our guide. It's what we have to do to follow. I mean, when we're talking about budgets, that's what we have to go by. We have to go by the, what is our plan for the next 20 years? And that's Horizon 2025. And so, when we're talking about preparing our budget and that sort of thing, that's what we're going to look at. We're going to look at that Horizon 25. We're going to look and see what our priorities are in the next one to five years. And that's how we're going to create our budget as far as, you know, functionalities and things like that that we have to do.
Thanks for your time.
Sure. I enjoyed it.
I would add to that question, just to talk a little bit about the process, your observations about the 2045 process, what worked well, what you would do differently. You know, two years is a long time. What, just talk through that a little bit, please.
It is a long time, but I think it was handled fairly well. You know, we had a consultant that came in. And then, you know, Whitney Hodge was the consultant at the time. And we had lots of meetings. We went and visited lots of, we had community groups and that sort of thing that we would go to and listen to what the community's feedback was, get their input. Then, we would come back, lots of priority, lots of changing, lots of red lines, you know, that sort of thing in the last two years. But I think, I think the planning commission is very proud of what the outcome is. And I think it's a great guide for us for the next 20 years.
All right. Now, I've asked other people about the biggest challenge facing our city right now. And we've come up with, you know, the lack of housing and need for housing and for homelessness. So,
Sure.
those two kind of go hand-in-hand also
That's right.
on getting the right homes for the right people that need those homes. What else do you see as one of our big challenges right now?
I mean, as I mentioned, I think infrastructure. I think the roadways, that's going to be something that we're going to have to address. You know, there's a lot of development occurring. There's a lot of development that's going to be still coming as the city continues to grow. And we've got to be able to maintain our roads and improve them in order to meet that. So, I think that's probably the next, the next thing that's probably we're going to need to look at.
To follow up on 2045. So, the planning commission got a lot of input from the community. It had how many different sessions of, I don't know, dozens
It was a lot.
or more than that, a lot. When you, from your perspective, when you take a step back and you say, what does Johnson City not have that it needs? So, we have, this is, this is an off-the-wall question for you. You haven't thought about it, I bet. But when you go think about some of the public input that you got. But we're gaining on some of that. So, when we really talked about quality of place and then our investment in the Martin Center with ETSU, it was because we didn't have any place for the fine arts or for our students
Sure.
to get exposed to, hopefully, they'll be having some Shakespeare and stuff like that out there that they, that they can go to. So, that was an intentional project that we did invest in so our children could get greater exposure. Are there any other things that you can think of that's not here in this community that we, that we need to have?
Well, I'm a little biased because I have a grandson who was on the swim team at Science Hill High School, but
So, Trader Joe.
I set myself up for this. I said I set up for this one, sorry.
And I'm very, I'm very jealous of the Kingsport Aquatic Center. And I think the city of Johnson City could do really well with an aquatic center, some type of area like that.
We do have a master plan now.
That's the start.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, kind of to tag on that one, and I'm not sure when you ended your tenure at the JCDAs, but I think you were there when John Sevier was getting started in that process?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Why do you feel like a project like that is important for the public side to get involved in?
Oh, I think, I mean, first of all, I'm so excited about the new facilities that the homeless are going, and I shouldn't necessarily homeless, but that they're going to get to move into. I actually, my husband and I actually housed a homeless couple in our camper over the whole winter. And I have worked with the homeless coordinators to try to get them jobs, to try to get them housing. We got them into the John Sevier. And I am so excited about the opportunity of them being able to go into the new facility. I think that's going to be awesome. I think John Sevier has so much potential and will be so beneficial for downtown Johnson City. If they do, the way that they talked about with retail and then, you know, development on the top with residential and stuff, I think it's just going to be a great asset for Johnson City.
You got all your magic questions?
Come on, you've got 12 pages. Come on, Joe.
Kind of along the lines of one you've addressed, but if appointed, are there specific goals from the commission's strategic plan that you would most want to help advance over the next year plus?
You know, those strategic plans are so awesome. And it's so hard to decipher which one of those four great strategic plans are the best. You know, I think, I guess, if I had to choose one of them, the quality place would probably be my choice because of the fact that Johnson City is so awesome. It's amazing when I was the general manager of the mall and, and, you know, obviously, you talk to customers and customers came from all over the area. What brought you here? Or if I found out, if I'm interviewing somebody and, and they were moving to Johnson City, what, how did you get to Johnson City? And it's amazing, the people who truly were vacationing here and grew in love with it, you know, or were just driving by and fell in love with it. And this, this place, just the people are so friendly. The place is beautiful. And I think that, that it's just important, that that part of it is so important because that's what I think attracts the people here. Obviously, economic vitality is extremely important to the city. You know, excellence in government is extreme. I mean, they're all, every single one of those strategic plans. And I commend all of you all for coming up with them because they are all extremely important.
I may add on, since, since you were with the mall, we've established, I think, 37% of our revenue comes from sales tax. I don't know precisely what percentage of that is coming from the mall, but I imagine a pretty good chunk.
Yes.
Would you talk a little bit about what you see to be the sort of strengths and threats on that sales tax horizon for us as a community? We've, we've gone over a generation with being really the region's primary retail destination. But there are lots of people who'd like to take us out of that role. What do you, what do you see as the things on the horizon?
On the horizon, as far as sales tax goes?
Well, threats to our sales Threats to our sales tax, generation, opportunities on that front.
Competition.
Yeah, competition and opportunities on that front.
Yeah, no, I think, I think that, that, you know, it's important, I think, for us to take care of our, our areas, our retail, our businesses. The sales tax, I think, is, it's okay. I mean, I don't think that we need to increase it, but if we do, you know, I think it's just one of those things where we've just got to evaluate what, what is really truly important.
We always need more sales tax.
Yeah, absolutely. But that's where the, that's where the economic vitality comes into play.
Timbra, you are now working with middle schoolers.
I am.
Okay. We've talked a little bit with some of the other candidates about smaller children, things to do, gathering places. What do we need to be doing here for middle school and teenagers? Do we have things here that attract them, that we can get them off their phones and, you know, interact with each other in some kind of healthy something?
You know, I think the city of Johnson City has great areas. You know, we've got lots of wonderful parks. To be quite frank, the problem is parents and not monitoring their children and allowing them to sit on their phones all day and all night. I've got some students that are up until 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning on their, on their iPads or playing games. And I think it's, it has to start with the parents. There are plenty of areas in the city of Johnson City that people can do and that they can go to and that they can, you know, take up their time. And it's just, it's sad, really, when I, when I see it. And it's just, it's sad, really, when I, when I see it, that how much time kids are on their, their phone and their iPads. That's one of the reasons why I didn't want to substitute at Science Hill High School because, because of cell phones.
One of the things that I have, for the nine years that I've been on the Commission, when we're doing something, I look at return on investment, and that is big for me.
Sure.
Sometimes it's not a monetary return on investment, it's a quality of life kind of thing. Like, the roads don't really make us a whole lot of money. In fact, we lose a lot of money putting the roads. But the nicer the roads are, the happier the people living here are. The happier that people come and visit and spend money here. What would be one of your priorities as far as making decisions like those kind of things?
Well, you know, I think it's, it's extremely important to maintain the budget. I mean, I think that's one of our responsibilities, is not only a public servant, but we are, we have to be good stewards. And so, I, I think that, that first and foremost, Todd, I think the budget is, is, we have to maintain that. You know, but I do think it's one of those things that, you know, the, and I think with Horizon 2025, that is going to kind of guide us, that will help us get through the next, you know, 20 years or so. But, you know, we have to be physically responsible with the city's money. And so, you know, I was looking over the, the cost for some of the roads and that's what, I mean, I mean, we're, we're talking millions, you know, and it's absolutely crazy how expensive things are. And so I can only imagine how difficult it is to make those decisions. And, you know, and that's one of the things that I think is hard for the, the community to understand, is I know on the Planning Commission, when, you know, they would complain about traffic and about how the roads, you know, aren't wide enough, or they're not big enough to handle the traffic that this development is going to occur, I think it's important that we somehow explain to them how expensive things are. You know, because I don't think most people understand that if you just go and build a, a road, you're talking, you're talking a million dollars possibly, you know, and, and I think if they, and I'm one that I, I strongly believe, and I manage this way at the mall at Johnson City, is that when we had to make decisions and it came down from the corporate office, and, and I had to tell my staff what it was, I always felt like they needed to know why. And so I think it's important for us to explain to the city, to the community, to the citizens, why? Why can't we do this? Because we do have a fiscal responsibility to make sure we manage the budget, and we can't fix all the roads all at once.
Well, I have a follow-up. Oh, go ahead.
One more, just a quick thing, is that people don't really realize, if you're going to widen a road and you're going to put in a stoplight there, that the stoplight is almost half a million dollars to put in a stoplight.
Oh, sure. Absolutely.
These are things that I had no idea before I got on here, that the controllers, the touchpads, all those kind of things, it's like, that's a huge decision, and it's usually made on accidents and the safety more than it is traffic kind of thing.
But that, but that might be something, Todd, that we can, we can educate the citizens on. And I think that might help a whole lot with some of the, some of the, you know, tensions that maybe they have, is for them to understand, you know, how much things cost and what our budget is and, and that sort of thing. I think that would help tremendously.
Just a follow-up, since you have been on the Planning Commission, I'm looking for an answer here on this one. So NIMBY, you're, you're familiar with NIMBY, not in my backyard.
Right.
So you will get a new development coming forward that might need rezoning or, or annexation. And people learn about it because we post signs out there, and they come and, and then present their case on why they don't want it there. How do we, you know, it, it, that thing gets very, very emotional, you know? That's development as well. I mean, each one of our neighborhoods at some point in time upset somebody else's idea, who were, who were there first, idea of a peaceful neighborhood. So it's a very difficult explanation of that when they are very, very emotional about it.
Sure.
And so, how, how do we do a better job of that? Because it seems like every major project that's coming up, it's like, but we don't want to hear. We don't want to hear.
Well, and, and they don't. And quite honestly, I can remember when we built our house and there was nothing behind us, and I loved it. And then I hated it when they started developing and we all of a sudden had people behind us and they could see what we were doing in our backyard and, but you know what? That, it's growth. And, and I think that the guidelines that are established by the city, you know, especially on the Planning Commission, that, you know, if it meets our plan and it makes sense financially, I think sometimes we just can't, we've got to listen to them, we've got to be very empathetic to them. I can relate to them, but I think it's important for us to make the right decision based on what our plan is, and does that development meet all of our guidelines? And is it going to be the best thing for the city and for that area?
And the impact on the infrastructure with that.
Sure.
The numbers.
Joe, you got, what's your next?
Yeah, so I, I would kind of shift to more of the governance function of the Commission, and I would ask you to describe how you would evaluate the city manager and set expectations without crossing over into the day-to-day operations of the city.
Well, I think it's important that we, that we create the policies and the directions for the city manager and the city staff. I think it's extremely important that we don't micromanage. I think it's important that we follow through and hold them accountable for, for adhering to those policies and that direction. And so I think that, you know, we've, we've got, we've got a good staff, and I think it's important for us to let them do their jobs. But I think it's also important for us to stay tuned and make sure that we are in tune with each department and what is going on. If there's dissension within a department, we probably need to be aware of that and, at least get our ears open a little bit to make sure that we kind of pay attention to that. But again, I, I'm a firm believer that we don't need to be micromanaging the city staff. I think that's what we're paying Kathy Ball to do, and I think, quite honestly, I think we have a great, a great staff with the city.
Timber, your, your family, all, you know, all of you guys have spent a lot of time serving Johnson City, I mean, even teaching and your, your daughters teaching and loving on kids, and what do you think has made your family that? And your, and your daughters too. My dad always said, like, you'd look at the parent, you know, that the parents have, you can judge a parent by their kids sometimes and how they're, so what do you think has been so instrumental in your family serving, especially kids in Johnson City, and why is that important? We don't overlap the schools terribly much, but we do live together.
Sure.
And is there any kind of advice you would want to kind of push in that school system? And you even mentioned, at Science Hill, do they allow cell phones still? Still, you said that?
I think they put them in a pouch or something, don't they?
What's this?
At Science Hill.
Just cell phones, you had mentioned.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
From the school perspective, what do you think we're doing good?
They're supposed to. Some classes, yeah. Well, I have to give a lot of credit to my mother and father-in-law. And, you know, they, they raised Jeff Aldrich, he's, he's just wonderful, wonderful man, wonderful husband, father. And, and I learned a lot from them. And that allowed me, I mean, they were both teachers, my father-in-law was a principal at Liberty Bell years ago. And, and so, we've kind of, we've always been pretty tough on our kids, raising them and making sure that they know right from wrong. And, and we got them involved in sports because I knew that we had to keep them extremely busy, because if they had time on their hands, they'd probably get themselves in trouble that they, you know, or something that they shouldn't be doing. And so, you know, I, I think that, you know, that's, that's the key, is, is I think just kind of, you know, the service, I mean, my kids are always, my daughter's a midwife, you know, Megan, like, that you know is, is a teacher, as a matter of fact, our classrooms are right next door to each other. And so I just, our family just loves Johnson City and, and loves serving it. And I think, you know, it just kind of started with my mother and father-in-law, and it's continued.
Great, thank you.
I've got lots of questions.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be great. If anybody's, yeah, why don't we wrap that up and ask us, and you can ask individually or as a whole?
Okay, all right, sure. So one of the things that I wanted to know is what lessons have you learned that would help someone new to this role to be effective?
Don't read the comment section.
I can start with that. So there's a lot of reading. Yeah, we talked earlier with our dentist friend that was up here about the ability to read and retain kind of things. It helps if you can read pretty fast and retain it when you're getting 800 pages on Friday, to read over the weekend, discuss, get it changed on Tuesday, adding or subtracting things from it, and then vote on it on Thursday.
Sure.
So it helps to be able to read and retain. And I was told by some of our city managers in the past that not everybody on the Commission read and knew everything about what was coming up on the meeting. But it really helps if you read all of that and know exactly what you're voting on. So, so taking the time, and it's a lot of time to get in, and, you know, I, I read and I take notes. So when I come in, I have a book, and if something passed eight months ago, I can look back and I've got it in my little booklet here with me. So if you, if you plan ahead and do those kind of things, it makes you up to date on what we're doing and what was going on. If you have a question, that's the third reading of something, I can go back to the last two meetings in my little booklet, and I have my notes on that. So if you can read and retain, that helps quite a bit, and it's a lot of work, so.
That's great advice, though. Thank you very much.
I'll add to that. Go in with the understanding that you don't know what you don't know, but to be intellectually curious, and there's no bad question. And so, in the beginning, it's spending a lot of time with staff, with the administration, with, with the, with our city manager, to learn the ins and outs of the, you know, how the city is running, a lot about the budget and all that, all that kind of stuff. And then this commission, from time to time, we do retreats, and I would think with a new member onboard, we need to do one kind of right away. And that kind of gets us grounded in our governing principles. We have a set of governing principles that we all, you know, assign to, and just what our work is for this next year, the procedures. We've got a lot of new stuff going on in this commission right now, so we'll have a, a new member, we've got a new mayor, we'll be electing a vice mayor at our meeting on Thursday. So there's going to be a lot of newness, and so the, the biggest thing is to stick with each other and that make sure that we're all on the, kind of, the same page in terms of the, the big things, but on the, on the individual things, don't be afraid to bring, bring forward and state your opinion on things, and that's really important.
Thank you. Are there any common pitfalls or challenges that a new commissioner should be aware of?
Yes.
Other than reading?
Yeah. Don't, yeah, other, well, there's that one, but on top of that one, I would say, don't commit to policy positions based on the first person who speaks to you, because you generally are getting a piece of information, you're not getting the totality of information, and avoid the temptation to commit to a course of action based on the input of one person, because there's perhaps more of the story that you have not yet heard.
That's very good. Anybody else?
Another thing is, I stole, I've said this a few times, but I stole a carpenter's thing, where they measure twice and cut once. You listen twice and speak once, instead of the first thing that wants to come out of your mouth sometimes, probably not the smartest thing to say or do. If you think about what you're going to say before you say it one more time, it's like, oh, this is probably how I should do it, and speak your second thought and not the first one that jumps into your brain.
Very good, very good.
We've got all sorts of advice. Here's another one.
Good. I love it.
Don't go out and speak for the commission.
Don't what?
Don't go out and speak for the commission.
Oh, sure.
The mayor interprets what the commission has decided and then speaks for the commission. But if people ask you things, you don't turn away or anything, but say, I don't know where the commission's going to be on this, but, you know, here's, I want to listen to you, and you may give some, a little bit of feedback, but, you know, just keep it there, and then you bring that information back to the commission as we talk about it.
That's good advice.
Yeah.
Good advice. Okay, how does the commission monitor the performance of city programs and services?
Let me talk about Parks and Rec first. Go. And then when you have grandchildren that play, they hate to see me coming to a, to a baseball game or the soccer field because I'm like. Now, really, visit, for the things that you can visit, visit and, you know, participate in some way so you get the full feel of it. But there are many things that you just asked us about, so, you know, how do we, how do we measure the effectiveness of our schools? Well, we get reports from the school system once TCATs are taken and the results of that come back. And so we know, you know, how, how that's doing. So it's, you know, you, you can't manage what you don't measure. And we've kind of gotten away from a dashboard, but we want to get back to that, I think, in terms of some of the other programs that are going on. We get certain reports on a regular basis, like for water sewer, so we know the performance of the, of the water sewer department, like clockwork, yeah, for sure. But there are probably some things that we need to get those metrics on, to Tricia's point that she made when she was up here. And so, and, and through the city manager's report, she usually brings one or the other departments to report on that department, you know, as a part of her ma, city manager's report, so.
And I would add too, I think if you back away from what is happening, we're getting financials every month, the budget document is prepared as a budget document, but it also has some narrative sections where it's describing how it ties back to priorities and vision and so forth. And so you can read those financial reports as you go through the year and be tracking back to that values document. The other thing, though, that I think is also happening from a day-to-day standpoint, I don't think the community or the commission over the last decades have appreciated the consequence of the one thing this group can do or destroy faster than anything, and that is the corporate culture of city staff. We are one of the largest employers in our community, we have a thousand employees. What you do on your best or worst day is not about supervising employees, it's about the culture that creates the environment where those employees are motivated to do what is best.
Totally agree.
And I don't know that Johnson City has always done that as well as it could, and in many respects, that probably more than any one thing is going to have, one former commission colleague used to say that culture beats strategy every day of the week, and that is absolutely the case. And the commission, more than anybody, can set the tone for that with staff and director-level folks by creating an environment where they live in terror, or creating an environment where they're encouraged to do their very best work and supported, but ultimately also, as you use the word, held accountable to the outcomes that we're aiming at.
Right. So awesome, thank you. Okay, so let's see. What, what do you all consider the top priorities for the city in the next three to five years? I mean, I know we've got the Horizon 25, but what, if you had to say right now, what is your top priorities?
First thing is getting these people moved from the John Sevier to their new place.
Amen.
And that's been delayed, but we got, hopefully, I mean, that's one of the things, five years ago, that I put down as a priority, was taking care of the people there because they deserved a better place to live than that. And that's finally coming up, so I'm really looking forward to that coming to fruition. Another one is our Boones Creek development. We go back to taxes increasing them or not increasing them, sales tax. If, I literally pray that this will finish out, will get signed, will get started on this, because it could be enough money to not raise taxes for the next 20 years. this, because it could be enough money to not raise taxes for the next 20 years.
Sure.
We get this with the tax incentive we've got and the things that are planned, just on one of the developments, it's just 100 acres, and there's over 900 acres in this development that can be done, and it's just the first 100, we're trying to get somebody to sign that, but.
Is that the area where the fire station is?
Boones Creek is the paddles.
That we've had lots of development.
The whole area behind that, 100 acres there is the first one. There are more on the other side, all the way out to the railroad, the trestle track.
Right.
So, we've got lots of room for that, and that would be a huge thing that
Absolutely.
we would be proud not to have to raise taxes for the next 20 years and have this kind of thing going on. So, those are two of the things that I am looking forward to. One, moving the people to their new apartments, and number two.
And when's that going to happen?
Well, it's supposed to start November 1st, the first four or five people. So, that's, like I said, I'm praying these things come to fruition, because it's great for these people, it's great for downtown development, the hotel, it's great for Boones Creek with that development, and it's promised not to decrease the sales at the mall, because we're not moving any of those stores out there, they're not going to be replicated, they're not going to be done. So, so there's lots of good things about that. So, that's a couple of the things that I'm really looking forward to seeing finished.
That'll be great.
And since I'm new, I can kind of talk about what I would like to see over the, the, the next 30 years, like you mentioned. But for me, it's, we have a lot of excellent things that Johnson City's really excelled at for a long time, and so it's making sure to maintain what the previous commissions have invested in. Our fire department is exceptional, our schools, you know, when you're already doing really well, it, it's hard to keep improving.
It is.
So, it's a lot easier to fall backwards. So, it's really to maintain what the investment that they've done. It's also to keep building our culture within City Hall, but also just the whole community. And I think the more gathering places that you create in town, which is what I like to call it, for me downtown is a big part of that, but it's also all the Parks and Rec places. We've got a lot of opportunities for those that other communities don't have, just the way our town lays out, and, you know, all of our school campuses, and so gathering places can really help just create an, an identity, and let neighbors get to know each other and see their different backgrounds. And then, just got the health and safety as always. I think East Tennessee can always keep moving forward on the health side of things. We have such a great area outside to enjoy, getting people to continue doing that outside. I think Parks and Recs is, is, we're, we have, we're maximizing our capacity. I'm careful. And I just want to make sure that we get everybody that wants to be involved a spot to do that.
Right.
And make that, that stuff as excellent as possible. I don't necessarily think it needs to necessarily be a ton of change, just more maintain the quality and keep working on the details.
Sure, absolutely.
Priorities? More Christmas trees. No, sorry. Just, you know, for me.
If you sell out in three minutes, you're not charging.
No, I know, well, it's probably be that this year. Growth management, and we get back to the Horizon 2045, but how we manage our growth, which encompasses everything, from infrastructure to housing to the whole nine yards. And so, it's getting committed to that as a framework, and we have, but it is how we implement it and the speed with which we implement some of it. So, I think from that is, is to look at, and I'll go back to Commissioner Fowler's point. There are, there are some infrastructure projects that, when you finish them with what's going to be happening there, will deliver a return on that investment quickly.
Yes, I agree.
And so, sometimes you have to use that. It's, it's like, you know, oh, now they start bringing more money in, so we can do more infrastructure. So, there, there's a, there's a method on which we're going to have to look at things very carefully, and then, you know, pull the trigger on those things that can, that can really be beneficial in, in, you know, a little bit faster way. Nothing ever happens fast enough, I think, for, for us, and infrastructure is one that just, you know, it takes a while and a lot of money, and you were talking about a million dollars for that road, it was probably a million dollars per half mile of one lane for that road.
Right, no, yeah, you're right.
Well, thank you so much, Timara, for your time, and just your whole family's commitment to the community and kids here.
Well, thank you to each of you all for, for all that you're doing, and, and I know this has taken a lot of your time, too, and I just appreciate the opportunity to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you guys want a little break, or move right into the fifth? Let's just, yeah, I know, sorry. Yeah, we'll, we'll do just a five-minute bathroom break, come right back.
Welcome back. Thanks, everybody, for a quick break. I'll open the meeting back up. Next, we have Seth Thomas. Thank you for being patient and waiting. Also, thank you for being here. I know you probably had to change a lot of travel schedule to make it here in person. And so, we wanted to try to accommodate you if you weren't here. So, thank you for doing that to be here in person.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Just a quick reminder, if you can just spend a few minutes telling us about yourself, why you want to be involved at City, how you could be good at it. We'll spend about thirty, thirty-five minutes asking you questions and follow up at the end with you asking us.
Great. Well, thank you, guys, for taking the time. A big thanks to the four that went before me. Serving is obviously a very tough thing to do, and it takes someone who's kind of has that calling and has that draw to it. And I think that is why I've always felt that drawing to serve and to be a part of the city that I live in and that I move through and to help and watch it grow. I'm not from Johnson City originally. I'm from Rogersville. I'm not a local. I'm a regional, I guess. But I moved up for college, like so many do, and I have yet to find a reason to leave. And I've gotten the, I've been lucky to get to travel a lot of places around the world and domestically, and I always end up back here. It's a great place to be. It's a great place to land, and it always feels good to come out of that airport in Gray and get in my truck and drive back into Johnson City. So, yeah, I've been involved in the city. I've been in here about two decades, a little over two decades. I've always found myself kind of in the mix of things, whether on purpose or not, all the way back to the college days. I found myself in a regular weekly gig playing at one of the establishments downtown and kind of grew a crowd there, and it was a fun, a great experience, and taught me how to be in front of people. And it's okay to mess up the lyrics every now and then, because most people don't know the lyrics to most of the songs anyway. So, through the years, I've just kept those relationships, kept that involvement in downtown and in the greater area around downtown, and opportunities have just continued to arise to get involved, not necessarily with the city or boards at the time, but with the people, the stakeholders that were operating these businesses throughout the city. And so, those relationships just fostered over the years. I started, out of college, I cleaned the beer lines at most of the restaurants and bars in the tri-cities. And if you've never gotten to do that, don't. It's not great. But it helped me develop a lot of relationships with a lot of people that had some ownership in what was going on in the area and the region. So, it was, all of those relationships always just, it was funny to me to look at, because they would always come back around. I'd met someone at some point, and ten, fifteen years later, no matter what I was doing, I would run back into them, and they'd say, hey, whatever you're doing now, I need, I think woodworking was one thing that I was doing when I was at Skillville. Some of the bar owners would come to me and say, hey, we need some things done at the bar downtown. Can you come repair this or do whatever? And so, those relationships just continued to foster throughout my life and throughout my time here in Johnson City. And that's what's given me some buy-in on wanting to see things really be successful and continue to grow, and to get to watch all of that. There's been a lot of growth in the last twenty, twenty-five years that I've gotten to see firsthand in that downtown corridor and throughout town. So, it's been really, it's been a great opportunity, and I think those relationships give me a unique perspective, and hopefully would be able to utilize those relationships to, and the trust that has comes with those to, to help facilitate the future of Johnson City and what we want to do and what the plan is. And so, yeah, I think that covers it.
That sounds great. Ginny, I'm going to have you do the first question this time.
He set me up for this first question. That's really good. First of all, let me tell you that there are a lot of people, I hear so often that are so sad that Skillville is not there anymore.
Me included.
Yeah, it was a great concept, for sure. Seth, I know you had a small business. We just talked about it, and you're familiar with a lot of small businesses, not only in downtown, but probably outside the downtown area. How do you, what do you see the commission's role in economic development, you know, in our community and how to support businesses from a city standpoint?
Right. So, starting a small business, anyone who's done it, even if you haven't done it, it's an incredibly difficult task, and it's daunting, and it's costly from time to time. And so, I think the commission's best opportunity to help promote small businesses and to, and to create an environment where small businesses can thrive is through support. And so, through Skillville, for example, there were instances where we had to get things done through the city. Sometimes those processes went smoothly, and we were able to get full permits and things. And sometimes they were slow, and sometimes that created more cost on our end. So, there was a varying levels of situations where having support from the commission as far as process, or just being able to have those conversations on what the district's doing. We want to, I want to open Skillville right here. No one's really made it this far down that street yet. It's good to have that insight to say, hey, do you guys have anything planned down this street? Is this smart for me to put my business here? I think those types of insights are really, really help to foster a good relationship with the commission and the small businesses. But the small businesses just want to feel supported at the end of the day. They want to know that the commission stands behind them in, through trials and tribulations, and when business is good and when business slows down, when the waters come in the door. I've swept floodwaters out of Skillville a few times, that the city shows up and is willing to support them. And in that scenario, it worked out great. They came down and looked at the sewer right next to the building and realized that it was, had more lawn furniture in it than water. And so, just bringing some awareness to that, to say, we need to create a frequency to where we check these things more often, to make sure that those aren't creating other issues. But I felt supported in that moment. I felt like they saw what the issue was. They came and looked at the problem and said, yes, we'll take care of that. We'll get this thing cleaned out. And it did help some of those problems, alleviate some of those problems there at our building. So, I think it's just a support system to know that, that the city is always going to have your back as much as they can, and the commission will have your back as much as they can, and to show up. It's just showing up. You used to come to Skillville. I loved seeing your husband come in and work on stuff, because I knew you, I know you, I know you liked that kind of stuff anyway, but it just showed that you supported what we were doing, and you saw the value in it. So, sorry, long answer, but support, support from the commission and showing up and showing that you, you care about what we're doing and what we're trying to do.
In your words, what is the commission's role in a city manager council form of government?
I think the, the commission creates the structure. The city manager creates the movement. I think it's good to have, I like this system of government as opposed to, you know, a single mayor and councilman, because there's going to be good discussion with, about every topic. It's been said a few times tonight. There are different perspectives with each of you. And so, to get those different perspectives, you kind of create a cohesive thought. And so, the city manager is getting a cohesive thought. They're not getting a lot of different avenues that are coming in at different paces. They're getting, hopefully, one cohesive thought from the commission of a direction and gets, and create a scenario where that gets pushed into the, the department, the city departments for whatever the, whatever it would be, gets pushed to where it needs to get pushed, gets some functionality added to it. The departments that need to be involved are involved. But I think the commission creates the, the structure in which those things are done, in the city's best interest, in the citizen's best interest, in the community's best interest, kind of that oversight to make sure that everything we do needs to have some sort of purpose and intention and sustainability, if it applies. So, I think probably just the structure around it that creates some.
I guess, following along on that, where do you see policymaking ending and administration beginning, if you were trying to describe where those two things meet?
I think policymaking, it's tough, because I don't, I haven't seen the inner workings of how this commission and the city manager coincide. And so, a lot of that is probably left to discovery. So, I won't speak too in-depth on it. But I think as long as the leadership leads well in the policymaking, up to the city manager, the city manager's role of implementing that policy, I think, I think it's where, yeah, I'm not, I'm not going to give a, I'm not going to walk around that. I don't, I don't have enough information to answer that question legibly. I tried. I'm not going to do it.
How would you approach issues like affordable housing, like infrastructure and economic development? What, what do you think your role could be on those, those things?
So, I think affordable housing, it's been mentioned quite a bit tonight. I think one thing that we can do as a commission and just planning forward, whether it be through the Horizon Plan or even in the Strategic Plan for 2025, is it's going to cost money. So, how do we figure out to create the best scenario where it doesn't cost as much money? So, things like, you know, creating new housing, whether it be traditional single-family homes or affordable housing, if you go to a new area of town, you have to create new utilities. You have to create new roads, new sidewalks. All of that, those things have to be maintained. And so, I think the benefit and the wise decision initially would be to create some infill, affordable housing. You already have all of that infrastructure in place. You can get creative with infill housing. It may not look like traditional housing. You can get creative with spaces and sizes and do varying levels of housing when you infill. But I think it's really important to, to use the space we have, to utilize space that the city may already own, and try to keep, if you keep the cost down for, to build them, you can keep the cost down to the consumer, the renter, the homeowner, whatever it may be. But I think that would be the first step, is creating, try to, try to look at opportunities where we already have utilities, land, sidewalks, things like that, that wouldn't have to follow to create a livable space.
Seth, so, when I was trying to decide people that I'd like to interview, I kind of looked at making sure people had done some community service and showed volunteer time and a desire to care about our city. What's something, what's a, what's a skill or perspective that you could bring to the commission that one of the four of us, I think we all balance each other out currently really pretty well with different perspectives? What's, what's something you could bring that we, that would help?
You know, I think as far as the community goes, it's my longstanding involvement in the arts. I'm a musician. I've been involved in that for a couple of decades in Johnson City and various other places. I've always tried to promote the arts, and not that you guys don't have a perspective on that or the value of it, but I've, I've been a part of it in Johnson City still to this day. And I, I've gotten the opportunity, I travel a lot for work, and I've gotten the opportunity to see cities all over the country. And one thing that I do when I go to these, these different, varying sizes of cities, is I look for their arts district, because that's usually where you see the most life happening. You see people mingling around. You see people out sitting in public spaces and utilizing public spaces that have been created by their city councils or their mayor and alderman. And so, I've gotten to see a lot of township cities do it well. Some don't always do it well. I've seen some that left a lot to be desired, but I always look for the art spaces first. When I go to a new city, I always look to see if there's a band playing that I like. When you look at, you know, part of the goal of the Strategic Plan, tourism falls into that, and that's always going to be a heavy thing, that we have a lot of natural resources that we want to bring people to. Music, art are usually the first thing that people look for in a new town, is how well does the city manage it or, and/or support it? And so, that would be a unique perspective, I think I would have. And you guys may be great at that stuff, too. I don't know, but.
Let me ask you a question from an infrastructure standpoint. And I remember Bob Rains being up here last year, I think, to talk to a lot of the musicians here, and what is it we're missing, in your opinion, when you go to these places? What is the one feature that they have to have for local music to be able to be a business that's profitable to the, to the bands and all?
Yeah, there's a few different things. I think one thing that helps is walkability. I think it helps to have certain amenities tied to music venues, sports venues, any, any type of large venue like that. People want to go to dinner, and then they want to walk to the venue. They don't want to move their car twice. They want to, I mean, all of us have probably been in that scenario, where it's like, if I can park one place and hit three different things, and then, and then go to the game after that, I think that creates more movement, or it gets people moving in those areas towards, in those directions, and it keeps them there for a little while, which is good for surrounding businesses, for retail, for the venues. And that's what I usually do when I find, if I do find an artist that I like in a town that I'm visiting, first thing I do is look at the restaurants closest to that venue, so I can just knock that out and with one, you know, I'm usually in bigger cities, so it's a $30 parking fee, so I don't want to have to move more than once. So, I think that's, that's one of the big things, is creating areas where you can kind of take care of all of that stuff. I think one of the, the other things is, or one of the struggles that I've seen in Johnson City, is just its proximity to other markets. It's kind of a weird, well, it's not in a weird area, but when Forty went from Asheville to Knoxville, I'm not sure when that actually was finished initially, it, it did a lot of damage to this market as far as music goes, because Asheville's a bigger market, Knoxville's a bigger market. And most bands wouldn't come to this market, because it would just split the Asheville and the Knoxville ticket sales. So, that's something that, that I think this area, there's a reason that the bands that used to play here in the seventies and eighties, this is no longer part of that, that trail of tour that they would take. And not that there's, that's not an insurmountable issue. It just, you have to be a little more creative to get bands to come to this area specifically, because they will all drive to Asheville or Knoxville. Most of us who are fans of music will, to see a band that we really like, and they know that. So, I think there's some things that could be done in that respect, but those are things that probably matter the most right now. And then utilizing the spaces we have, Freedom Hall, which is, it's been great. They've had a lot of great bands coming through there, and it's, it's been a lot better than it has in previous years, so it's good to see that.
As you consider the potential of being appointed to an interim seat, which boards or committees do you think you would be most effective on beyond the city commission and why? Each of us end up serving on various boards and commissions. Are there any that you're specifically aware of that you think you bring a unique perspective to?
Well, just getting caught up on the Horizon 2045 Plan, I would really like to be on the Planning Commission, if it possible, because I think, I think these things coincide. And, and to know what's happening there is to be better at sitting here. And so, that one, I travel a lot, so the airport board may be advantageous. I don't know. I know Greg's already on it. I don't know if there's a lot of value in that one, but it makes sense for what I do for work. The rest, the Planning Commission would be the most important. I don't, I don't know, I'd have to look at a list and see what others I thought I could be valuable on, but I know that I would be valuable on that one.
And this isn't really a direct link to my question, but it does spring from things you said in your answer. This role demands a lot by way of evening meetings and reading thousands of pages yearly and site visits, et cetera. How do you plan to manage those time expectations in relation to the other commitments you have in your life now?
Yeah, for sure. And that was really the biggest contingency for me, and I thought a lot about that over the last week. The thing, I'm lucky that I work remotely, so I spend most of my time working from home. I do have flexibility in my travel. As long as I know, you know, have some heads up to what's coming down the pipeline, I can adjust travel as needed. If I know way ahead of time, I can just avoid any situations. Now, there may be scenarios where it's tough, or I've got a red eye back to get to a meeting, which I do that anyway, without having to be back, just to get back home and get in my bed. But I fully understand the requirements of this, of this role, and that's been probably the biggest thing on my mind. But I think that I have the capacity to, to fill this role and be present. And I also spend a lot of time on airplanes. It's a great time to read.
So, I think I've asked everybody this question. If you're chosen to be on the city commission for the next year, what would your top three priorities? What do you want to get done, try to get done?
Right.
It's hard to do it in a year, let me tell you. Everything's slow in government.
Yeah.
You're used to private sector things, and I keep thinking, these are going to be done, and it's going to be a little while.
Right.
It's a frustrating thing for those who have been out in not the public sector, this is the private sector kind of thing, so.
Yeah, that's, obviously, we've talked about housing. We've all, everyone's given, given their piece on housing, and we got a little in-depth on it there a second ago. Affordable housing is obviously a big issue. Can't, can't speed it up. Yeah. I think one thing that, that, you know, like you said, in the context of a year, it's hard to get a lot of stuff done. But one thing that I really want to see some movement forward is, is understanding the pace at which everything is moving. Everything, a lot of things are going technology-based. And so, when, a priority would be workforce management, creating, looking at economic vitality. But what does that look like ten years from now? We really don't know, because technology has moved faster in the last five years than it did in the previous twenty-five. So, how do we, as a board, as a city government, look at the, whatever data we can find, you know, there's new data created every day about this, and how do we prepare ourselves now for what could be coming down the pipe in three to five years, as far as technological, technology jobs, you know, our position in this part of the country? How do we support that? Do we have kids coming out of ETSU? How do we retain those? If the jobs are going towards technology, do we have the infrastructure to, to support jobs that they may want? They, I think we're going to see a lot more remote work. Do we have places in town where these employees can work remotely, but still have, you know, the CPU and things that need to come with, with running computer programs? I know we have Spark Plaza, which has been a great asset. Is that enough? Maybe it is, maybe it isn't. So, another priority would just be looking at the technology. I think it's moving so fast. If we don't at least watch it and keep an eye on it, it'll catch us before we've had a time, a chance to plan for it. And it's, it's a little scary. There's a great unknown out there, but.
And Chattanooga was the first five-gig city, and then we are the first ten-gig city.
Right.
So, that was one of the plans.
Yeah.
Because we, you know, technology's coming, we need to make sure we have the computers fast enough for new business that's going to depend on that. People coming and working from, from home, from other places, it has been an attraction for them to come here. So, those are the kind of things that we need to keep looking into to attract more people, but we need a place for them to stay.
Right. Yep.
And that's, that's the, the balance that we're looking at.
I think that's really important. And probably my third thing would be the connection of spaces. I think we've done a great job of creating spaces for people to be, place-making, and, but how are, are all of those places connected well enough that they're cohesive? Is the New Walnut Street corridor actually connected to downtown, or is it just adjacent to downtown? So, how do we create, you know, the bridges between those spaces that make them all make sense and create a larger cohesive piece that then moves up Ron Street, moves up Buffalo, and extends out into areas that we all know probably need a little more attention in the next five, ten, fifteen years, the South Ron and different varying things that were in the strategic plan, where let's start looking at some zoning. Let's start looking ahead at some ways that we start looking at some zoning, let's start looking ahead at some ways that we can get things moving in that direction. I think, yeah, those are, those are three pretty important priorities to me. Yeah.
I think Seth, you've talked about some things that, you know, and maybe in your final questions you ask us what keeps us up at night, you know?
Something like that.
And it's something we haven't talked about tonight until kind of now. And that is the potential for volatility in the economy, disruption in the job market because of this new technology, you know? Are they going to, they're going to quasi hire 11 AI workers in place of 25 local residents? And those are all things that we have to start thinking about in order to build resiliency into the city's, you know, foundation of how we, how we run things. The, the economic vital, as part of economic vitality, what I just said a minute ago is the possibility of economic chaos at some point in time in our city's future, could be for everybody. So how do you think even now, I'm asking this real kind of out there question, that we ought to be thinking about what we have to do to get ready if we have some kind of economic downturn because we've got two sources of revenue in the city? And that is sales tax and property tax. So what should we be doing now to prepare for perhaps volatile?
Yeah, I think, I think the one that's probably most volatile now would be sales tax, just because everything is moving online. And the, unfortunately, shopping in person, which, you know, the mall has been a great asset to Johnson City for many years. Downtown was a great asset for shopping before the mall came. Unfortunately, I think that those, that type of infrastructure may no longer exist in 30, 40 years. I think, I think everything is at your fingertips. We've become an impatient culture. Everybody wants it the next day. So I think that one, property, property tax, I think there's a little more sustainability there. It's probably a little more chaos-proof, not impervious, but I think it's a little more chaos-proof. But I'm interested to see where this, you know, one-click culture, how that kind of fleshes out in the next five to 10 years where, I mean, between DoorDash and the Amazons and, I mean, pretty much everything's being automated and subscription model at this point. How does that affect our in-person, retail, commercial? And not only that, the, I think the, the bigger chaos is if that goes too far, then we also lose our community because people aren't around each other anymore. We're already seeing aspects of that where people are kind of closed in, you know, you don't even have to go get your groceries anymore, they're bringing them straight to your house. I like going to the grocery store, but that's just me.
Get ready.
I'm, well.
Because you always get so many.
Right. I will, I'll take that advice for sure. But I think, I think there's going to be volatility no matter, you know, what happens is change is volatility in its, in its core, but, but I think if we look at the trends, we look at what's happening, we look at how the community is already responding to these things. Are we seeing fewer people in our green spaces, things like that, which would tell us that people are staying inside more? And I think it was discussed earlier, how do we get kids off these devices that they, that's all they've ever known? I think that's a tough question, but I think it's not one that's insurmountable. I think it's, it's something that has to be done or we lose, we lose community, we lose relationships and it becomes really difficult. And that's just generally speaking, not Johnson City specific, that happens everywhere. But, but I want to do, I want to do a good job to preserve these spaces so that we preserve these relationships and the community that comes with it. So, sorry, that was a long answer for that question.
Great. Joe and Todd, maybe we'll do one more each and then Seth will let you ask us some questions.
Yeah, I would ask, give a specific example of how you will increase access to commission decision-making for residents who usually don't attend meetings?
That's, you just, that's one of my questions I was going to ask you, so I'll go ahead and answer it. You first, I'm just kidding. So specifically on that topic, you know, I follow a lot of, you know, local and some national politics and I, but I pay attention to how representatives present themselves. And I noticed one day, I'm watching a state representative from North Carolina on threads or something, I think. I have no buy-in to North Carolina, don't really know what he's talking about, but the way that he presented himself and the way that he explained things was refreshing and it was very clean and to the point. And he's now the Attorney General of North Carolina because I've watched some other videos of his. But I think that kind, I won't say transparency, although it holds up to scrutiny, but I think that kind of forward-facing representation to where you get people involved, whether they want to be involved or not, they just essentially will ingest that, that kind of information because you're, you're giving it to everyone. I think that's really important to, to kind of talk through this, these processes. I know it's, there's a lot on everyone's plate and it's hard to make time to try to create videos or create content, but that's just the world we live in. You can get information off to a lot more people a lot faster by creating these types of outlets. And it's, it's so interesting to watch these representatives that do it well say, hey, this is what we're discussing this week? This is how it affects the citizens of Johnson City? This is how it affects the budget? This is kind of what we think, or not, not speak for the commission, but, you know, these are the thoughts, these are the pain points of this type of legislation? And kind of open it up that way, say, hey, the meeting's Thursday at 6:00, come down and sign up to speak if you'd like to. And I know we make announcements, the agendas are posted, but like you said, these are people that are non-traditional, that don't traditionally get involved in politics. You have to meet them in their spaces. They're not coming to these spaces. Because if you've never been interested in politics, it's not a really exciting space to come to. There's a lot of learn, there's a learning curve that you have to understand first. But I think there's ways to, some outward-facing ways that the commission can explain things to the, to the greater community, can, can kind of break down the processes of how all of this works and maybe even break down how the commission kind of comes to consensus on something. Like, we don't all agree on everything. This is, we sat three, three to one, three to two on this for a while before we finally figured out how we could kind of make it work. I think people would enjoy seeing that kind of transparency that holds up to scrutiny from the city commission and they would learn as they go. You know, you learn as you watch and ingest this stuff. So I think there's, there's a few different outlets where you could do that, to get people, I mean, we had 19 people apply for this seat, so it's getting better. There are more people involved for varying reasons, but that's, that's a good sign. Yeah.
All right, that leads me to my question.
Okay.
What was the biggest thing or reason that prompted you to put your name in the hat for this?
You know, I've had some, some history in serving on the JCD and other, and other boards and commissions. I'd always considered it. It was always there because the service, I've always been, had a propensity to service for my community. I thought about it and I, and I didn't really anticipate giving it a lot of thought. And then I started getting, there were people reaching out that I don't communicate with consistently. I started getting messages from, from people in the community that I have a relationship with, I've known through, through some season of life. I started getting messages that said, hey, I think you should apply for that seat. And then another one. And then people from all walks of life. And it made me stop and say, am I, am I more equipped to do this than I would have given myself credit for? I don't know. And I, and I still have a lot to learn, but I think I've, I've created a culture of trust around the people that I, that I'm, have a relationship with and I've known over the years that, that they trust that I would make the right decision, whether hard or not. And my decision would be motivated by the well-being of the community, of the people within this community, the, the health of the community. And, and I think that trust is just, is why they, I got, I got, I was communicated, those communications came and, and, you know, I'm grateful that, that people put trust in me and with a desire to serve. I think that it's a, it's a unique time and, and I'm excited to watch the city grow and continue to help it grow if, if that were to be the case.
A lot of those people you talked about communicated with us too, so.
Really? Good, good, good. They told me they would, I hope they wouldn't lie.
Any other questions from the commission?
This is real quick, it's just two, two words. What's our greatest strength in Johnson City and what's our greatest weakness?
I think our greatest strength is our natural resources and our greatest weakness is...
Don't say the commission.
I don't think we have a great weakness. We have some, some room for improvement in some things, but.
Okay, that's good. I don't want to take your time for questions now.
No, it's okay. Sorry to not have an answer on that one. Try to be thoughtful before I spout out a weakness.
Yeah. Yep, so you can say what you need to say. No, I was just going to say, we've still got about eight minutes left, so we'd love to hear the questions you have for us.
Okay. And this is, all of these are kind of open to the floor, whoever feels the most led to answer. Is, is there a neighborhood or area in Johnson City that you feel captures the balance of features we are striving for? Walkability, various levels of housing, mixed use, commercial presence, access to parks and green space? Anywhere in town that's?
I'm going to jump in and answer that one. I think that's a great question. I think it's a different answer for probably everybody in the community because everybody has kind of a different need or expectations of what they want. And so what, what, what I perceive as that may not be what somebody in a different neighborhood perceives, so I want to be really careful how I answer it. I do think the tree streets by nature covers a big variety. I think everybody feels drawn to be near it and I think there's a reason, it's because it does have a lot of diversity, culture, I mean, age, population age, elementary school, next to a college, and you can walk to what I call gathering places. So for me, I think, not that the neighborhood has everything, nowhere has everything figured out, but I think it's a good thing to kind of know what people are kind of drawn to. But I think it's important for a community to have a space for everybody. Some people want a big lot that they can enjoy. I think it's good to protect farmland for people that want to have every size farm. And so I'm a big believer of having, when it, when it, when it comes to development, having a denser community inside of town and as you walk outside of town, become less dense. So the tree streets I do think embodies that.
I think most of our communities who have a community school, you know, have a lot of that because they use the school as that green space as well.
Right.
Before and after, after school hours. And I think those neighborhoods who have neighborhood organizations, associations, that they get together and then they plan activities for their neighborhood, that brings a lot of strength. And I think that's one thing the city needs, needs to work on. We used to, the city used to in community development really help organize the neighborhood associations in most of the neighborhoods around and organize the meetings that they would have. And then they, they could give input back to the city as well as like, oh, you know, we need speed bumps here or we're having too much crime and that kind of stuff. But definitely the, the neighborhood schools offer a great.
Which is, which is just the argument for, for walkability within cities. That's, that's what creates that community is being able to walk to school.
And I, and I would add to that. I think we have, as a city, prioritized in our planning interconnectivity in terms of subdivisions and, and developments so that we aren't creating little silos that you have to leave to go out onto an arterial route to get half a mile down the road.
Right.
I think in the past as a community, we have not always had the investment in sidewalks and I, you know, some of that may have been economic limitations, but we are now beginning to create some interconnectivity with sidewalks within existing neighborhoods. And I think to Greg's point, the south side neighborhood does benefit, A, in terms of the diversity of some of the housing, but they also happen to be, you know, adjacent to the Tweedsey Trail by way of that extension, Founder's Park, et cetera. And so they, some of those things are happening there, but we have other parts of town where that might happen too with, as we get more interconnectivity.
Yeah, correct, yeah. How are resources prioritized when there, there's a competing need currently with the, with the commission? Like affordable housing, infrastructure, public safety, all of those are needs that, that are going to have, need to be met. How are those prioritized with the commission currently? Not those specific things, but how are needs prioritized?
Yeah, I think needs are prioritized with a focus first on core services. I, I don't want to speak for the commission, but I'm going to look down the line and say like, am I on the right track here? I think, I think there's an emphasis on core services.
Right.
You know, we can have all the fancy shiny objects a municipality can get into, but if the fire truck can't get to the house in a timely way, it really hasn't done us a whole lot of good. And so I think as a community, particularly this commission over several iterations has focused on core services. You see that in, you know, the public safety function, the ISO, in the fire department, I think in our water and sewer and solid waste and curbside recycling and those kinds of things that we've tried to do. I work with a lot of neighborhoods throughout all of East Tennessee and I can count multiple times a year where the day the garbage is supposed to be picked up, truck just didn't show up. That never happens in my experience. If Monday's trash day, that truck is coming. I mean, it may be off by an hour, but, but I mean, it's coming, you know, pretty consistently.
Right.
And so that's a level, I think core services would be the first priority. Then I think when we went to Greenville, where you start to look at things around affordable housing and some of them, there are some public-private partnerships where you can do some things. But at the end of the day, I think what we really need to be doing is creating an environment where the private sector to its fullest potential can do that because they're generally going to do it better than, than a public entity when it comes to actually building housing stock.
Right. And along those same lines, is, is there a willingness from the city to facilitate or incentivize these construction projects through the private sector to help, I don't know if it just helps spur growth or?
Not just a willingness, a demonstrated history of doing that.
Right.
I mean, we did that with the tapestry at Roan.
Yeah.
That was one where there, there was a city participation in that project to make that even possible.
One of the other things Seth is, like Joe said, we went down to Greenville, South Carolina, who's done a lot of work on affordable housing. And a few years ago, they set up a housing trust fund and looking for funds from all sorts of different, from HUD, from all sorts of other areas to begin to build the, the funds available to help incentivize private developers. And so I think that's one of the things we have to really look at right now, starting to get that housing trust fund. Now, we do get CDBG funds. Now, we do get CDBG funds that come into the city, but, you know, it's very limited in what you can do with it, and we, but we do use it wisely, for sure. But I, I think there's a, I mean, we know we have to do something, and whatever those scenarios are, you know, of property that we have, working with private developers, figuring out how we can get the, the main thing is how do you get the cost of a house down?
Right.
That somebody can afford. And so there has to be some kind of offset somewhere.
I'm going to give my little response to that and then close this up, because we're out of time. But from my perspective coming in, I think previous commissions, previous administrations have done a great job for Johnson City on the core services. I mean, I think the, the, the stuff we don't see, we take for granted every day, Johnson City excels that. We've got two different water sources. We get, we have a water source still from a natural spring, and then we have a second water source. We've got three different sewer plants, ISO rating number one for the fire department, there's, I think, 55 in the country. Our public safety, I mean, our safety records are, are, I mean, sometimes it gets missed because we talked about downtown so much, but our safety record is great, our schools are great, but the shiny object hasn't always been a focus.
Right.
And I think now, learning for other communities and public-private partnerships and how that can be successful, and minimize the outlay upfront the city has to do, but, but can kind of work together to get a project done, I think is something that the, the commission is really open to. But with that, I want to thank you for being here. Thanks for making arrangements to be here. I want to thank everyone for their time this evening. And I can speak for all of us, is, we've got, we've really got 19 letters of interest, and then we have five great people we've interviewed tonight with a lot of different backgrounds and history that could bring a lot of different skill sets to the commission. So we'll make it a tough Thursday night to figure out what, what direction to go. Over the next couple of days, we'll each consider what we've heard tonight and all of the information that we received, the quality of each person's submissions, specifically the five here, their experience in community service, the content of the letters of support that we've received, and how each person could add value to the commission. We will be back here for a regular meeting on Thursday session, it's at 6 o'clock, to deliberate and appoint our next commissioner. That will be the time for public comments, so if someone does want to make a public comment at that time, sign up in advance. However, we would request each of you to be in attendance, because once we do vote, the new commissioner will be sworn in and be ready to take the seat, and after that, we'll actually elect a vice mayor and have our new organization moving forward. So be ready and be prepared. I think, I think staff should send everybody an agenda packet to...
You should have already received one.
Yeah. With that, close the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.